Dias, I saw your hand wave. Thank you. All right. All right, it looks like everybody's on board. So since this is a separate recording, I'll state for the record, my name is Alan Lilly, Presiding Hearing Officer of the State Water Resources Control Board Administrative Hearings Office. This is a continuation of the rebuttal phase of the hearing on the prosecution team's draft cease and desist order against Blue Triton Brands Inc., which I refer to as Blue Triton. And today is March 21st, and it's just after 1 o'clock in the afternoon. And again, I apologize for my delay in getting on board. I just had a couple of technical issues. And Mr. Bylekki, we did receive your email that you have to leave at 2:30. I think we probably will be fairly far into Mr. Nichols' testimony by then. I hope he will complete it in summary by then. And if you have cross-ex questions, I maybe I'll let you go first, depending on timing, or potentially you can, we can have that happen tomorrow morning. I'm not, I don't want to stop the hearing today at 2:30 because I I just don't want to lose two and a half, potentially up two and a half hours of hearing time, but I will try to make sure you have an opportunity to ask cross-examination questions if you want to. And with that, hands are up. Mr. Petroselli, your electronic hand is up. Go ahead. But go off mute. There you go.
Yes, Mr. Lilly, we, we have what you could characterize as a perhaps a general objection to the Nichols' testimony. I'm wondering if you would, if we should raise that now or before we do our cross-examination?
Why don't you raise it in a few minutes after I, when I get to that, and after I basically I will ask him to authenticate it, and then you can state your general objection, and then we'll, we'll go forward from there.
Thank you.
All right, and Mr. Lowe, your hand is up. Go ahead.
Yes, I, I have a doctor's appointment at 4:00 PM for me and my wife, and it's really hard to get them, so there's no way I can give it up. We have to go. So if there's any way that we could break at four, that would be good for me, but
Okay.
Go, I think.
Well, I, I certainly understand how that goes, Mr. Lowe. We'll see where we are at 4 o'clock. I will give you the same accommodation I said I would give Mr. Bylekki. We may continue past four, but you will, you already have the written proposed testimony of Mr. Nichols. He's our only, after you, he's our only witness left. And so if necessary, and you want to ask any cross-examination questions, if we can't complete that before you leave, we can do that tomorrow morning, and, and I will allow you to do that. I one, excuse me, it's tomorrow afternoon. I have a schedule conflict in the morning tomorrow, but we are set to go at 1:00 PM. So as necessary, we can do that. All right. So thank you. So anything else for today before we get started? All right. So Mr. Lowe, we, you are still under the oath you took previously for this hearing. And we have marked your written proposed rebuttal testimony as Exhibit Low Two. Is this your rebuttal testimony for this hearing? But go off mute, too.
Yes, it is.
All right. And as I mentioned before our break, I have read it. It's only three and a half pages long. It's very clear. But if you would like to briefly summarize the key points in it, I will be glad to give you an opportunity to do so. Would you like to provide a brief summary?
Yes, I'll make it very brief.
Okay, please go ahead.
I was concerned about the lack of specified references to and the provision of the documents referenced by Mr. Lawrence.
Wait, excuse me, Mr. Lowe. Slow it down into low gear about 75% as fast, or the court reporter is going to overheat.
Okay.
I want to hear it. She wants to take it down, but you're going a little too fast. So please slow down and go ahead.
Do I need to start over?
Please do.
I was concerned by the lack of specific references to and provisions of the documents referenced by Mr. Lawrence. At that time, I didn't understand the game that was being played by Blue Triton to withhold evidence until late in the process. I was concerned about the references to doc, documents to prove conclusions that were made by Mr. Lawrence about water rights, historical use, et cetera, without any specifics. Entire documents and exhibits with multiple documents were given as proof with no specific reference to where the documents, where within the documents the proof was located. Historical references used to say bottling was using water from Strawberry Creek in 1909 and earlier are false, and I have further explained why in my written statement. I wanted to correct the assertion that these have long been called Arrowhead Springs, and that the area, area at the base of the mountain is called the campus. Arrowhead Springs have always been at the base of the mountain. And and the use of the campus was only by Campus Crusade for Christ when they temporarily owned the property. The owner, and they were the owners before the tribe. I noticed that B, that Blue Triton has now used the con, had, now has their contractors calling these Arrowhead Springs, the Forest Service Springs, and calling the base the campus. That is a new thing. I was concerned with the description of the relationship between, between Blue Triton and the Forest Service and the adaptive management plan. Mr. Lawrence made it sound like everything is good and agreed to when that is not the case. Blue Triton has done on record as opposing the adaptive management plan if it requires reducing the take of any water. They signed the temporary permit reserving the right to challenge the decision. So things aren't rosy between them and the Forest Service, and they're still threatening the Forest Service. I was concerned and still concerned, and this is the main thing I want to make a point of today, is regarding the 31 studies and reports that were supposedly writ, and many written in 2016 and 17 that are referenced by Mr. Lawrence. I'm not sure we have, I'm not sure we have these, even after the reams of material provided in Blue Triton's rebuttal evidence and testimony. We don't know what the 31 documents were. We don't know if we got them or not. And so it's hard for us at this point to tell you, Mr. Lilly, which ones were missing, because we don't know which ones they were referring to. So I believe that Blue Triton should have to describe the 31 studies and reports that were referenced, and also how to find those. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Okay, let me just make a note here. Thank you. All right. Does anybody want to ask Mr. Lowe any questions on cross-examination? If so, raise your hand, either your real hand or your electronic hand. Okay, I'm not, I see Mr. Mr. Petroselli, you're just stretching your, okay, I do not see any hands up. So with that, I will assume nobody wants to ask Mr. Lowe any questions, and I do not have any questions for Mr. Lowe. So, Mr. Lowe, would you like to offer Exhibit Low Two into evidence?
Yes, I would.
And does anybody have any objections to Exhibit Low Two coming into evidence? Ms. Grady, please go ahead.
We have a limited objection to paragraphs four and five of Mr. Lowe's written testimony to the extent that they proffer would be characterized as expert opinion testimony.
Wait, 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 Ms. Grady. Slow down, court reporter.
Thank you for the reminder.
I'll listen. You don't have to rush.
Thank you for the reminder.
Objections to paragraph four and five.
Paragraph four, to the extent that it offers opinion testimony that would, should be limited to that of a historian, surveyor, or engineer, which Mr. Lowe has not been proffered as an expert in those categories, and in his individual capacity, did not proffer himself as an expert. And paragraph five, to the extent that the opinion testimony appears to be related to historical or hydrology, again, which Mr. Lowe has not proffered himself as a test, expert in those categories.
All right. So those objections are overruled. I do believe Mr. Lowe, from his testimony on direct, has demonstrated that he has specialized knowledge of these topics, having done extensive research himself, plus having worked in the area for the Forest Service for several decades. So I think those objections, if any, if to the extent they're valid at all, go to the weight of the evidence, but not to the admissibility of the evidence. So I'm going to allow or accept Exhibit Low Two into evidence. Thank you, Mr. Lowe.
Thank you.
All right. So let's proceed with Blue Triton's rebuttal testimony and exhibits. And I'm not sure who to ask, which attorney to ask for Blue Triton, so I'll start with you, Mr. Donald. I just want to make sure Mr. Nichols is Blue Triton's only rebuttal evidence witness.
Lilly, and Mr. Sanders will conduct his examination.
Okay, well, Mr. Sanders, you're certainly earning your keep today.
I try.
I met with cross-examination this morning and direct this afternoon. We have to have a little bit of levity here. So we have received, I think, the new exhibits, the numbering system has gotten a little bit confusing, but the new exhibits that I see in my list are BTB six through nine and 19 through 21. Mr. Sanders, are those in fact Blue Triton's rebuttal exhibits?
I have to admit, I'm not sure exactly what 19 through 21 are. I believe that those are, actually, and I, I know those are for sure. Those are part of Mr. Nichols' testimony. So yes. So yes, those are the relevant documents that we're talking about today.
Okay, yes. They, they had not been offered before, I don't think. So I, I think they're, I think Mr. Nichols has referred to them. So we'll see where we get to admitting.
And, and we'll have a, a comment about one or a couple of those exhibits as well.
All right. So, thank you, Mr. Sanders. So Mr. Nichols, please raise your right hand the real way, not electronically. Thank you. Do you swear that the testimony you will be giving in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right. And Mr. Nichols, as a preliminary matter, you answered various questions that I and others asked during the February 16, 17, 2022 site visit. And I did not have an opportunity to administer the oath to you in the field. We just didn't have a way to have a good record of that. But I'm going to basically ask you to retroactively affirm that. So were the answers you gave to the questions during the site visit all accurate?
Yes.
And also, I do note that Mr. Lawrence gave answers to questions during the site visit. He had already taken the oath in this proceeding, so I'm going to treat his answers during the site visit as being given under oath. And, and just as a side note, I, I do want to thank both Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Nichols for being the tour guides during the site visit. It was a little bit unexpected when we got the snow, as I mentioned earlier, but I, I, we had a good group. Everybody trooped through. Fortunately, nobody got injured, and we didn't get lost, thanks to Mr. Lawrence guiding us in the right place. So thank you very much for being the tour guides, and also thanks to Blue Triton in general for providing the helicopter transits during the second day of the site visit. It was very important for me to get out to that site near boreholes 10, 11, and 12, and the discharge facility. Obviously, there was no other way to do that efficiently. One other thing, and I'm sorry if this may be a little out of order, but I, I'm going to just mention it now. During the end of this, when we were all at the borehole 10, 11, 12 location, I mentioned that Mr. Anderson, Mr. Woldridge, and I were going to take the first helicopter ride out. So we would have time to drive to the place where 40th Street crosses East Twin Creek and observe that before we had to catch our plane back to Sacramento, and we did. And Mr. Woldridge took a few photos there, which we have included in the folder with the site visit photographs. Mr. Ohini, who had not participated in the helicopter transit, so he wasn't aware of my announcement, appeared there in, in the afternoon. We rec, recognized him, and, and basically I told him at that point that I decided to conduct that part of the site visit without representatives of any of the parties, so there wouldn't be any issues with ex-party communications. And for that reason, we did not talk to him further. I mean, we basically said hi and have a good day. But that was it. And, and he said he understood, and, and that was all the discussions we had with him, and no one else was involved in this hearing was out there that day. So that's what we ended up doing. I think we were only there for maybe about 15 minutes. I did want to sort of complete the view so we could see where the water that flows down East Twin Creek, where it crosses that street and heads down into those percolation ponds. So does anyone have any questions or comments about that part of the site visit? All right. Thank you. I, I did want to just make sure that that was fully disclosed. All right. So, Mr. Sanders, you may proceed with your questions of Mr. Nichols. As I said earlier today, well, wait a minute. I'm about to let you proceed, but this is the point where I said I would give Mr. Petroselli an opportunity to state his, I think you said, general objection. So, Mr. Petroselli, please proceed.
Thank you. So here's, here's my objection and a question. You know, Mr. Nichols' testimony is very extensive, and he has it, an associated extensive report. His testimony has almost no citation within it. And there are, in some cases, it's reasonable that something he says in his testimony is likely based on precipitant, his precipitant knowledge, his experience working for Blue Triton, his training. But there are many other statements where the basis is not clear. And I don't believe that I'm I don't believe that you want to sit through me asking him every second, whether, what the basis is for every second or third sentence. So I think I will object now that the testimony as a whole lacks a clear foundation of personal knowledge. Unless you do want me to ask him about, you know, every other sentence or second or third sentence.
All right. Well, I have read Mr. Nichols' written proposed testimony, and one thing I noticed, he said he's been on site over 100 times. He clearly has extensive training and expertise in the fields of, I'll just say hydrogeology and related fields. So he's clearly very qualified to testify about the work he's done in this matter, and, and his report is, is quite clear. But I did notice, as you did, in a few places, there seem, I didn't say a lot, but there were a few places where some of the statements did not appear to be explained, and there wasn't any real foundation for them. So here's what I suggest we do. I, I'm certainly going to allow Mr. Nichols to testify to summarize his written testimony, his written proposed testimony, which I assume will become his testimony soon. And I'm going to allow you to cross-examine him. I don't think it's going to be necessary for you to, well, let me say this. I think the best way to proceed is you should prepare a list of the points in his written testimony. I assume this is primarily his report, which is Exhibit BTB seven, where you think there is inadequate foundation, or not, I'll say not a sufficient foundation. And I think the best time to raise those objections is when they, Mr. Sanders, offers that exhibit into evidence, which he will. And then we can cover that then. So I, I think that may limit your need to cross-examine him on every point. And if necessary, we can circle back, and he can explain where certain provisions came from, if you think that they're not supported, and he thinks they are. And we'll do it that way. So I think that way, Mr. Petroselli, you can focus your cross-examination on the areas where you have specific questions, and, and it'll be more efficient. So I'll just ask you first of all, does that make sense to you to proceed that way? But go off mute before you answer.
Yes, I, I believe so.
Okay, and we'll, we'll, we'll play it by ear, but I think that's going to be the most efficient way to go forward, respecting both his expertise and your concerns.
And I want to be clear that our issue is with the testimony itself.
Oh, this is in BTB six?
Yes, BTB six.
Okay, so that one's not nearly as long. So if there are certain points where you want to point out, I mean, I think the easiest thing is just ask him. See, I see the sentence here. What is your basis for that? And either he can explain it or he can't, and we'll go forward there. And if you have to then make objections to specific parts of BTB six, you may do that as well. So let's, let's proceed that way on that. So Ms. Doty, your, your real hand and your virtual hand are up. Good work. Take down, you can take down, there, take down your virtual hand and your real hand, and please tell me what your concern is.
We would just like, story of stuff, to make the same objection that Mr. Petroselli has made on behalf of the prosecution team. And then also request that you delay then until tomorrow, should we get there today, entering BTB's exhibits into evidence, so that we have time to highlight the portions that we believe have that problem. If, if what you're asking us to do is to point to the specific unsupported evidence.
Okay, thank you. I think that's fine. And what I'm going to ask for both of you, Ms. Doty and Mr. Petroselli, in return, is that you write out your objections and send them to, email them to the AHO. Something, and you'll have time tomorrow morning, because we're not, because we are not starting till 1 o'clock tomorrow. And of course, CC all the other parties, and then we can go down them. It's going to make a clearer record and, and just be more efficient that way. And, and of course, Mr. Sanders will have an opportunity to respond to those. And, and if necessary, he, he may ask follow-up questions for Mr. Nichols. We'll, we'll do it that way. I think that'll be the most efficient way. That's going to be fair to all parties. So, all right, Mr. Lowe, your hand is up. Please go ahead.
Yes, I, I'm confused a little bit. As I understood it, because there was so much involved in Mr. Nichols' testimony and in all the new references that we have, that we didn't have to respond to all of that until the surrebuttal stage. Are we kind of now shifting and saying by tomorrow at 1 o'clock, we need to have all of our problems with Mr. Nichols' testimony and the references all by tomorrow? Because I thought that was what we had to have in writing by the surrebuttal.
All right. Well, this is a little bit of legalese. This is the sort of thing that they teach people, teach students in law school, and we all learn through experience. So bear with me. I realize you haven't had either the benefit or the whatever experience of having gone through law school and all that. But here's the distinction. What we're going to do today and tomorrow is cover whether people think parts of Mr. Nichols' testimony are not supported by backup data. In other words, where it's just sort of in generic terms, and I'm not saying this is true, but Mr. Petroselli and Ms. Doty have said he may state some conclusions and has not explained the basis for those. So that's what we're talking about covering today and tomorrow. What happens on surrebuttal is really completely different, and that is where you or any of the other parties comes forward and says, okay, well, now that Mr. Nichols has testified to this, I have this other evidence from another witness, not Mr. Nichols, or not his documents. And I think that buts, responds to refutes something in Mr. Nichols' testimony. So that's surrebuttal, and it's something different. I realize these are, you know, perhaps archaic legal terms, but anyway, I hope that explains the process. And that's what we're scheduled right now. I, I forget the submission date, but there's a deadline for submitting, and then April 27 is where we're going to start that phase of the proceeding, if anybody says they in fact have witnesses they want to offer on surrebuttal. So I hope that clarifies for you the distinctions we're talking about.
So then tomorrow, I should come prepared to go through those items that I believe they don't have data to back up their conclusions. I don't need to tell you where that data is tomorrow. That can be what I do in the surrebuttal. Tomorrow, I just say, I think they made this conclusion without background.
Yes, and I would appreciate it if you would write yours out as well. And, you know, obviously, specific for, for Exhibit BTB six, page and line number, and for BTB seven, page and either section number or paragraph number, and basically just make a list saying statement, and, you know, basically, I assert that this is not supported by anything in the record, in any, either Blue Triton or anyone else's exhibits. But again, I think that'll make it go a lot faster if we have those in writing. And I, I've said it for you, Mr. Lowe and Ms. Doty and Mr. Petroselli, but obviously, if any of the other parties want to submit similar objections, they may do so. But let's, let's proceed that way. I think that'll be most efficient. And again, I'm I'm not in any way prejudging any of this. I'm just setting up a process so we can get through that. So, all right. So, Mr. Lowe, please take down your electronic hand, and we will go forward. So I assume, let me get, which, I gotta get the exhibits here. In case you're wondering why I reach around, it's because I still do things the old way with lots of papers. So I assume, Mr. Sanders, you'd like to start with BTB nine, which is the, which are the slides for Mr. Nichols' testimony. Is that where you'd like to start?
Actually, no, Mr. Lilly, I'd like to just ask a couple of prelim questions and then start with BTB eight.
Okay, so I, I did say I would allow you 30 minutes for summarizing. It's 1:32, so with that, please proceed.
Okay. Mr. Nichols, please state your name for the record.
Mark Donald Nichols.
And what is your job title?
I'm lead hydrogeologist at a company named Haley and Aldrich.
And please tell me a little bit about Haley and Aldrich.
Haley and Aldrich is an engineering firm that has offices nationwide, about 820 or 830 employees.
Thank you. And then please bring up BTB eight.
All right, Ms. Mullin. Please, if you can post BTB eight.
Mr. Nichols, is this a copy of your curriculum vitae?
It is.
Please really briefly describe your education, experience, and qualifications, please.
I have a bachelor's degree in geology, a master's degree in geology with emphasis in hydrogeology. And I've been working as a hydrogeologist in the, in, in the Western United States for about 25 years, working on projects related to water supply, power generation, and mining.
And how long have you worked for Blue Triton Brands or its predecessors on projects related to water collection in Strawberry Canyon?
Since 2001.
Thank you. Please bring up BTB six.
Okay, we'll get BTB six.
Mr. Nichols, is BTB six your rebuttal testimony for this proceeding?
Yes.
And did you prepare this testimony?
I did.
Please summarize your testimony for us.
And, and with that, Mr. Sanders, I, I mean, it's up to you, but you wanted to put up the slide. You want us to- And, and with that, Mr. Sanders, I, I mean, it's up to you, but you wanted to put up the slide. You want us to put up the slides while he's summarizing his testimony?
Um, I am leaving it up to Mr. Nichols, but yes, I would expect that the summaries would, would be requested.
And the only reason I say that is I encourage people to submit slides to help summarize their testimony, so you might as well use them. Uh, so Ms. Mullin, we'll put up, um, exhibit, Ms. Mullin, please put up exhibit BTB nine. Um, we'll go to the first page, and then Mr. Nichols, we'll just let you just say next slide whenever you're ready to move on. We have the first slide up right now.
Absolutely. Um, so today I'm, I'm here to provide rebuttal testimony on behalf of Blue Triton Brands in the administrative hearing regarding a draft cease and desist order. The next slide. The topics that I will discuss are a, a map that was prepared depicting Strawberry Canyon water infrastructure, prepared at the, at the request of the hearing officer. Also, classification of water collected in Strawberry Canyon, the hydraulic relationship between boreholes and the forest service pointed diversion in Strawberry Canyon, comparison of current hydrologic conditions to those reported in 1929 to 31 in Strawberry Canyon. And also, uh, a, a brief discussion regarding prosecution team, uh, hydrologic assumptions. Next slide.
Okay, and Mr. Nichols, just a reminder, you're not too bad, but slow it down to about 80% of what you're going at now.
I'll do that. Uh, the, the map that you see, uh, on the screen before you is a map that was prepared at the request of the hearing officer depicting the locations of key water resource infrastructure in Strawberry Canyon, including boreholes, tunnels, uh, the pipeline, tanks, valves, in, in control locations. Next slide. This image is provided to, uh, give the participants an understanding of the spatial relationship between the water collection points in Strawberry Canyon. You'll see this is a photo that's looking northward in the canyon towards the, the borehole facilities. Near the top of the photo, you'll see borehole seven, seven A, seven B, and seven C identified. Boreholes one, one A, and eight are identified. Tunnels two and three are also identified near the top of the photo. Near the center towards the bottom, you'll see boreholes 10, 11, 12, uh, location identified. In one feature of, of interest that's not shown on this photo or not annotated on this photo is the forest service point of diversion, which occurs about where, uh, the numeral one is after the word boreholes one, one A, and eight. So if you can imagine now the forest service point of diversion, uh, at the location of numeral one. Next slide. The first topic that I'll discuss is classification of water collected in Strawberry Canyon. Next slide. Important to understand how the water is collected in Strawberry Canyon, how the infrastructure is configured and, and how it operates. It's important to understand that there aren't any diversion structures that remove water from the creek channel in Strawberry Canyon. It's also important to understand that each tunnel and borehole is sealed with cement uh, at ground surface to create a sanitary seal. And those seals extend into the subsurface. And the end of those seals represent the nearest surface location where water is collected in each of those facilities. You'll see from the highlighted column in, in the table on this slide that the seals extend from uh, approximately 66 feet to 168 feet in length. And those depths represent the near surface water collection at each of these facilities. The tunnels, of course, are constructed differently. Um, they are also sealed with concrete. Um, but the, but the depths of the tunnels are shallower, ranging from 37, uh, feet at tunnel two to about 89 feet at, at tunnel three. Next slide. The aquifer that each of the tunnels and boreholes produce from is a fractured granite aquifer. The geologic records generated during drilling of the boreholes and also interior inspection of the tunnel confirms that, that each of these facilities produce water from a fractured granite formation. There, neither the boreholes nor the tunnel penetrate any geologic structures or deposits that might be characterized as a subsurface channel. And public, published geologic maps confirm that both the boreholes and tunnels are completed in areas mapped with granitic rocks. Next slide. The geologic map that you see on this slide, uh, is included from prosecution team exhibit three, page 65. And this is an excerpt of geologic map prepared by, uh, the USGS authors Morton and Miller. It's important to note that each of the, the water collection points here are shown located within geologic rocks, and I'm going to have to ask you to zoom in on the, the dark pink area.
Okay, we can do that.
And you'll see that the formation identified at the location of boreholes, all of the sevens boreholes, um, boreholes one, one A, and eight, and tunnels two and three, is, is noted as the MZSL formation, which is mixed granitic rocks of Silverwood Lake. You'll notice that-
I'm sorry, which is what?
The mixed granitic rocks of Silverwood Lake.
Thank you.
That's the name of the formation. The location of boreholes 10, 11, and 12 is shown near the lower right portion of the map uh, as we've zoomed in. You'll note that the location of those boreholes, uh, as included in the prosecution team exhibit shows that they're within, uh, alluvial deposits. Um, I've added the blue star to this image, which shows, uh, the correct geological location of those boreholes. Um, those boreholes do penetrate the same granitic formation or same granitic type rocks um, as, as the upper boreholes. It's a different formation, uh, referred to here as the KCC, which is the Monzo-Granite of City Creek.
And, and Mr. Nichols, just a little coaching here. When you say words like Monzo-Granite, make sure to really enunciate. I suspect that the court reporter has not heard of Monzo-Granite before. So just to make sure we got a good record. So please proceed.
Yes. So, so the, the, the Monzo-Granite of City Creek and, and the mixed granitic rocks of the, of the, of Silverwood Lake constitute a, a family or a group of, of granitic geologic or granitic rock that originate from the same, uh, basic geologic processes. And it's important to note that each of these water collection points are completed within these fractured granitic rocks. Next slide.
All right, and just for the record, we are now to slide nine of BTB nine.
So water collected by Blue Triton in Strawberry Canyon does not originate within any geologic feature that may be defined as a subterranean stream flowing through known indefinite channels. The BTB boreholes and tunnels do not meet the four-part test for a subterranean stream because no subsurface channel exists at the points of water collection. No relatively impermeable bed and banks exist in the subsurface at the points of water collection. No channel with a known or reasonably inferred course exists in the subsurface at the points of water collection. Groundwater does not flow in a channel of the water collection points. Water collected in, water collected by-
Objection. Objection. Um, I believe he's about to make a legal conclusion because I think that he means classification in a legal sense as opposed to, uh, um, geologic or hydrogeologic sense.
I'm going to overrule the objection. His more detailed written testimony, BTB six, uh, demonstrates he has some knowledge of these legal, uh, terms. I, I think it certainly is appropriate, Ms. Dodi, for cross-examination for you to ask him about the extent of his knowledge, but I think there is sufficient foundation for him to give this testimony at this time. So go ahead, Mr. Nichols. You may proceed if you wanted to summarize that last bullet point and then move on.
Sure. So based on this four-part test, water collected by Blue Triton in Strawberry Canyon is properly classified as percolating groundwater. Next slide. The next topic I'll discuss is the hydraulic relationship between Blue Triton boreholes and the forest service point of diversion in Strawberry Canyon. The next slide. The prosecution, prosecution team testified that water collection at boreholes one in one A reduced flow or lowered the water table at the forest service point of diversion. This slide shows you, uh, photos of the forest service point of diversion as, as we understand it. This is also one of the, one of the sites that was visited during our, our recent field trip. Um, the pipe that you see in these photos represents what we understand to be a borehole, um, that, that represents the forest service point of diversion. Uh, it's important to understand too, the history of flow measurements at this location. Um, the, 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 the water right associated with this point of diversion was, was granted or issued in 1936. Um, we don't know of any flow measurements between the period of 1936 and 2016, when Haley and Aldrich began measuring flow at this location. We don't have a record of how flows might have changed through the year or years, or what might have caused those flows to change. Really, that the assertion that flow was reduced here is, is in some ways anecdotal. The forest service point of diversion is located approximately 127 feet above borehole one and 157 feet above boreholes one A and E in elevation. Next slide. To test the relationship between boreholes one A, uh, one, one A and eight, and the forest service point of diversion, we did a series of shut-in tests. During these tests, we closed the valves at boreholes one, one A and eight to force the water table upward as high as we could, we could cause it to go. Uh, for, for the water table to, to be pushed upward from these boreholes to the forest service point of diversion, it would have to rise 127 feet above borehole one or 157 feet above boreholes one, one, excuse me, one A and eight. The highest water table rise that we were able to achieve during this testing was 34 feet. It's important to note that during the shut-in tests, we left the boreholes one, one A and eight shut in to the point of equilibration, and then for an additional period to see how those water levels would behave. And when I say equilibration, what that means is the water level rose, um, until it stopped rising, until it, 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 it stopped rising. And then, um, after that, basically began to decline naturally. The tests were repeated also by shutting in the forest service point of diversion of borehole. During this testing, we also examined the areas between boreholes one, one A and eight and the forest service point of diversion to see if new surface water expressions occurred during testing. Because we're forcing the water table upward, we wanted to see if that water table intersected the ground surface between the two locations. Next slide. Hydraulic testing conducted at the boreholes, the, the Blue Triton boreholes and the forest service point of diversion showed that they're not hydraulically connected. The geologic materials between the boreholes and the forest service point of diversion will not contain the hydraulic pressure necessary to drive the water table upward to the elevation of the forest service point of diversion. And consequently, it's not physically possible to drive the water table that high from boreholes one, one A and eight to the forest service point of diversion. We conclude from this that, that BTB boreholes one, one A and eight did not de-water or otherwise reduce flow of the forest service point of diversion, reduce flows at the, at the forest service point of diversion, if any, or more likely the result of deteriorated infrastructure, potentially wells producing in the communities above or climate-related effects. Next slide.
Can I ask you to please try to slow down a little bit? Thank you.
Sorry. The next topic I'll discuss is comparison of current hy- hydrologic conditions in Strawberry Canyon to those reported in 1929, 31. Next slide. Information that we have regarding hydrologic conditions in Strawberry Canyon during, uh, 1929 to 31 is obtained from work done by Mr. Rowe, uh, WP Rowe, um, as, as, um, submitted during these proceedings. I haven't done any, any, any work, uh, personally to validate Mr. Rowe's conclusions, but really in performing my review of those documents, take them at face value. Um, understanding that, that, uh, you know, there may be challenges to the, to the validity of those documents. Rowe describes conditions in the lower reaches of Strawberry Canyon as well as the upper reaches where Blue Triton water collection occurs during the period of 1929 to 31. Haley and Aldrich conducted a series of hydrologic studies in the upper reaches of Strawberry Canyon in cooperation with the forest service between 2016 and 2021. The, the study area for the Haley and Aldrich studies coincides with the upper portion of Mr. Rowe's observations. Um, in, in particular, Haley and Aldrich didn't review any, any of the conditions or evaluate any of his statements regarding the lower canyon. Evaluation of the Rowe statements and conclusions.
I, I'm sorry, Mr. Nichols. I, I didn't hear that last sentence. Could you please say it again just a little louder?
Okay, um. And-
It was your comment about what Haley and Aldrich did regarding the Rowe study.
Right, so, so the Haley and Aldrich study area extended from, um, from an area that we refer to as the confluence between Strawberry Creek and East Strawberry Creek to the top of the watershed. That area corresponds to the upper portion of the canyon described by Mr. Rowe. Mr. Rowe also described, uh, conditions in the lower canyon down by the hotel property. And, and frankly, the Haley and Aldrich study didn't extend down to that portion of the canyon.
Okay, thank you.
With regards to his observations there, um, you know, we, we didn't evaluate any, any similarities or differences there. Uh, but comparison of statements made by Mr. Rowe to, uh, information determined or, or learned during the recent study helps us understand some of the similarities and conditions between 1929, 2021. Next slide. Mr. Rowe reported that water, water sources in the upper canyon were developed by Blue Triton's predecessor in 1930. Prior to this, or his observations prior to this include an observation in 1929 where he said flow from these springs did not reach, uh, the existing water intake. At, at least during 1929. He also assumed in some of his other documentation that flows wouldn't reach Station 95, his monitoring Station 95 during summer months. The map that you see, uh, inset on this slide uh, shows a, a portion of Mr. Rowe's study area that corresponds with the Haley and Aldrich study area. And on this map, you can see where it says valley. Uh, below that, we see station number 90. And above that text, we see station number 107. We don't know exactly where Mr. Rowe's Station 95 was, but we can infer from the location of these other two stations that it was between those, uh, those two. Mr. Mr. Rowe also reported that flows from Upper Strawberry Canyon did not reach the USGS gauge during dry conditions. And the USGS gauge is understood to be the stream gauge that's still in place, uh, down below the hotel property. Mr. Rowe also reported a series of flow measurements at select locations spanning a nine-month period from September 1930 to April 1931. Next slide. The study conducted by Haley and Aldrich in, included, uh, monitoring creek flow, the extent of surface water expression, and groundwater conditions at select locations within the canyon. The study period extended from two, from June of 2016 until May of 2021, a total of 59 months. Monitoring included borehole and tunnel flows, flow from the forest service point of diversion, and pismeters installed at key, uh, at, at key locations within Strawberry Canyon. Conditions were monitored monthly to the extent feasible, uh, resulting in about 47 months of data collection, uh, in this 59-month period. The 59-month study period included periods of drought and weather than average conditions both. Excellent. Rowe's description of Strawberry Creek before development and water collection infrastructure conforms to the definition of an intermittent stream. Um, certainly, we know that portions of the upper canyon are ephemeral, and we didn't see a distinction in, in any of Rowe's work between intermittent or ephemeral conditions. But his work shows wide variability in surface water expression in the Upper Canyon, both spatially and temporally. Conditions observed by Haley and Aldrich in the Upper Canyon also reflect intermittent conditions with ephemeral drainages present. Haley and Aldrich also observed flows that alternately extended the full length of the study area and seasonally fully infiltrated into the canyon floor, emphasizing the variability of surface water expression in the Upper Canyon. Creek flows recorded by Haley and Aldrich reflect values both higher and lower than those recorded by Rowe during his nine-month study. Based on the study performed by Haley and Aldrich, it's our conclusion that the creek remains intermittent or ephemeral in the upper reaches of the canyon with highly variable surface water flows, both seasonally and from year to year. Next slide. Mr. Rowe estimated a dependable supply of 10 meters inches of developed water from the water sources in the Upper Canyon. We know that this dependable supply represented developed water because frankly, he had noted that flows from the upper springs or upper water sources didn't always make it down to the existing water intake. The only way to collect that water and to make sure that it was a dependable supply would be to develop those water sources. Mr. Rowe observed that the installation of water wells in the mountain-top communities had the potential to reduce flows at the upper water collection facilities. It's important to note that at least one current production well extends to a depth below the Blue Triton upper water collection points. The State Water Resource Control Board Enforcement Unit also acknowledged the potential for wells in mountain-top communities to reduce flows at water collection infrastructure and surface water expressions in the Upper Canyon in the 2017 ROI. However, the enforcement unit has not provided analyses of pumping impacts at Rim Forest or Crestline and their effect on surface water expression for Service Point of Diversion or Blue Triton Water Collection in Strawberry Canyon. Next slide. The next topic I'll discuss is prosecution team assumptions regarding hydraulic connection of Blue Triton water collection points to surface water sources. Next slide. It's important to note that water collection at the boreholes occurs between a depth of 66 feet and greater than 300 feet below ground surface. At the two tunnels, water collection occurs at points between 23 and 89 feet beneath ground surface. Each of the tunnels and boreholes were constructed for the purpose of interconnecting fractures that may not have been exposed to ground surface. By doing that, each of the boreholes and tunnels exposes more surface area within the aquifer to the borehole and tunnel, interconnecting fractures that may not have naturally discharged to ground surface or add a natural water, surface water expression. Hydraulic testing at boreholes 1, 1A, and 8, 10, 11, 12 has shown that these boreholes do not have a measurable effect on surface water expression. And the testing that was conducted at these boreholes in particular, I'll start with 1, 1A, and 8, included shut-in tests while monitoring water elevation and surface water flow conditions at a spring referred to as Spring 4. Boreholes 1, 1A, and 8 were shut in again until equilibrium and then for a period beyond that while monitoring a response condition at the pool at Spring 4. Similar testing was conducted at boreholes 10, 11, 12, where the boreholes were shut in and allowed to remain until equilibrium and then for an additional period beyond that while monitoring flow conditions in the creek just below the 10, 11, 12 location. It's unreasonable to assume that the maximum developed flows from the tunnels and boreholes is equal to any predevelopment surface water expression. Next slide. During hydrologic testing conducted by Haley and Aldrich, the full flow at each tunnel and borehole was turned out to ground surface between shut-in cycles and during tunnel drain-down cycles. The full flow from borehole 7, 7A, 7B, and 7C was turned out to ground surface at the vault location in September of 2019 until May of 2021. Each of these turnout flows represented greater than natural or greater flow than would naturally be present at a surface water expression or a natural surface water expression. Again, because each of these boreholes and tunnels interconnect fractures that may not have been exposed and flowing at ground surface. None of the turnout flows created flow in any of the ravines that came together as flow in Strawberry Creek. What we observed during these tests was that when the water was released on the hillside, it flowed for a distance down the hillside and then fully infiltrated. And this observation is similar to one stated by Mr. Rowe when he did a turnout test. And he reported that flow was sinking into the debris along the course of the hillside draw rather than producing flow in Strawberry Creek below. Next slide. In summary, water collected in Strawberry Canyon by Blue Triton is properly classified as percolating groundwater. Flow reductions at the Forest Service Point of Diversion between 1936 and 2016, if any, are not the result of water collection in boreholes 1, 1A, or 8. Hydrologic conditions existing in the upper Strawberry Canyon in 1929 to 31 reflect an intermittent or ephemeral stream system similar to current conditions. The prosecution team has presented no scientific basis for their assumption that the maximum developed flows from the tunnels and boreholes is equal to any predevelopment surface water expression. That concludes my presentation.
Right. So, Mr. Nichols, I'll just note you finished in 30 minutes even after you slowed down. And thank you very much for accommodating the court reporter and me so we could hear your summary as well. So, Mr. Sanders, does that complete your summarization or Mr. Nichols' summarization of his testimony?
It does, Mr. Lilly. I think, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Nichols had one correction that he wanted to make in his testimony regarding exhibit numbers.
Okay, so go ahead and tell us, Mr. Nichols, what is that correction?
I apologize. I neglected to say that at the beginning. In my written testimony, I refer to figures 1, 2, and 3.
Wait, 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 wait. We're persnickety here about things like this. So let's put up exhibit BTB 6 and tell us what page you want us to go to.
And I will have to find the page number myself, actually. In there are several references in the document to figures 1, 2, and 3, and those figure numbers should be different numbers.
Okay. It's probably good to find these so we can get it corrected. And we might, as we did with some of the other witnesses, I might ask you to work with Mr. Sanders to just submit a revised version. If you can tell us now, that would be useful if you can find them.
One of them is page 5 on line 8.
Okay, I see a reference to figure 1. What should that be?
Figure 18.
Okay. Next.
A reference on page 31, a reference to figure 2.
Okay, what line are you at?
Line number 7.
Okay, what should that be?
Figure 19.
Okay. Any others?
Yes, figure 3.
Wait, yeah, tell us what page to go to.
That's on page 32.
Okay.
Lines 6, 12, and 19.
And what should that number be instead?
24.
Okay. Okay, are those, is that it, do you think, as far as you know?
I would state any occurrences of the figures number 1, 2, and 3 throughout the document should be changed to those numbers.
Okay, I do see on page 33, at line 13, there's another reference to figure 3, so I assume that should be changed to 24.
Yes.
All right, so let's do this. Mr. Sanders, if sometime, maybe if, after we finish today or potentially tomorrow morning, maybe you can work with Mr. Nichols and just prepare exhibit BTB 6 revised. If you just email it to me or to the AHO with CCs to everyone on the service list and just have a compilation of where you've made changes, then we'll put the revised version in the record. That'll be the easiest way to deal with that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lilly. We'll do that.
Yeah, it's just, it's just, then we know we have the right numbers. We don't have to keep coming back to the recording. All right, so with that, are you done with your summarization, Mr. Sanders?
We are. That's the complete testimony.
Okay, so, Mr. Byleki, you said you had a schedule conflict at 2:30. Do you want to ask Mr. Nichols any questions on cross-examination?
Yes, I would.
Okay, do you think you can finish them in the time, your time allotted?
Absolutely.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and just a reminder to try to keep it in the form of short questions rather than statements. I'm not saying you weren't going to, but just a reminder.
Mr. Lilly, I'm gonna interject myself just real quick. I'm gonna tag team with my colleague, Ms. Grady.
Okay, I prefer if only one of you object.
There will only be one of us objecting.
And which one of you will it be?
It will be Ms. Grady.
All right, that's fine. All right, so, Mr. By, maybe you won't need to object. I don't know, Ms. Grady. We'll see. So, Mr. Byleki, why don't you go first with your cross-examination questions? That way, we can accommodate your schedule conflict.
Thank you. But, Mr. Nichols, I'm wondering if you could let us know what was the longest shut-in period that the boreholes or wells were subject to when you were making the observations relative to geoelectric pressure readings? What were the longest shut-in periods during the studies that you were responsible for?
To my recollection, the longest was about seven months.
And could you specifically state which boreholes or tunnels were involved in that longest period?
I'd have to refer to the document to be certain, but I believe that was at boreholes 1, 1A, and 8.
And you recall what period of time that was, which year and month?
I don't recall exactly the date of the shut-in. We could refer to my report if you'd like. And I believe all of that information is provided in the report.
Can you state again what the boreholes or tunnels were for that seven-month period?
I believe it was boreholes 1, 1A, and 8.
Okay. Thank you. That's then my question.
All right, thank you, Mr. Byleki. So, Mr. Lowe, are you going to be having cross-examination questions for Mr. Nichols?
Yes, I was planning on some, but I'm still a little confused about cross-exam versus rebuttal versus sir rebuttal, so...
Okay, well, then here's what we'll do. I'll go ahead with our normal order, which will be Mr. Petrazelli and then Ms. Doty, and then I think you'll be the only other person asking questions on cross-examination. So maybe you'll get an idea of how they do it. Oh, Ms. Fry also, of course. Excuse me, Ms. Fry. I didn't see your pile there.
I believe, yes, I apologize, but I believe Ms. Belinky may have questions as well.
Okay, yes, I'm seeing, the problem is I don't have, your faces all kind of jump around on the screen here, and I apologize, but yes. All right, so let's proceed that way, Mr. Lowe. I'm not guaranteeing I'm gonna stop at 4. I just don't want to lose that hour. But if, we probably will not get to you by then, but I will give you leeway to ask your questions tomorrow afternoon if we don't get to before then. So with that, so let me just make a note of who we've got here. So we have Mr. Petrazelli. I assume they're gonna wanna ask questions. And then Ms. Doty. And then... Where did she go? Ms. Belinky, are you gonna, I assume you will wanna ask questions? You're on mute, but we'll, you can let me know after you've heard cross X from Mr. Petrazelli and Ms. Doty. Okay? You're not, yeah, okay. And then Ms. Fry and Mr. Lowe. Is that, now I got, I got Petrazelli, Doty, Belinky, Fry, and Lowe. Have I missed anybody who wants to ask cross X? All right, so we'll start with you, Mr. Petrazelli. Can you give us any time? I'm not gonna hold you to it, but just for planning purposes, do you have any time estimate?
So unfortunately, Mr. Nichols has a lot of testimony. It's very dense and it's very detailed. So I do expect a significant amount, length of time, probably at least an hour, but probably more.
Okay. All right, well, let's go ahead and get started around sometime between 2:30 and 3:00. If we get to a logical break point, we'll take a break. Go ahead and get started. I will keep track of your time. I was allowing 45 minutes. I understand there's a lot of material here that's new. So I will, I'm gonna keep track of your time. And when you've gotten to an hour, I'm gonna ask you how much more you have and if any, and what topics you still wanna cover. Obviously, I want this to keep moving forward, but I do wanna give you an opportunity to ask your questions. So it's 2:12. Let's go ahead and get started.
You can give me a moment?
And let us know when you want us to put up slides. Exhibits, I should say.
We pull up BTB 6.
All right. We'll display exhibit BTB 6. And tell us what page do we like to go to?
And if we can first go to page 3 at about line 14.
Okay, page 3, line 14, you say?
Yeah, and if we can make that a little bigger.
All right, let's scroll down. We'll try to get all of paragraph 7 and enlarge that a little bit. There we go.
So, page 14, if we can, or excuse me. This is on page... three, line fourteen, if we can start with the U.S. Forest Service infrastructure. Actually, can we go to page four, line fourteen?
All right, I'll move to page four. And line fourteen is where paragraph eleven starts, and we'll scroll down to paragraph eleven. Okay, go ahead with your question.
So, Mr. Nichols, I wanted to ask you about this first, about the first sentence in this paragraph. Do you understand the difference between the prosecution team making an assumption and the prosecution team applying a legal presumption?
Um, if I could just have you clarify the first sentence of paragraph eleven?
Well, you can read it.
No, no, is, is that the paragraph you're referring to, is paragraph eleven? Okay. In, in your question was whether I understand the difference between an assumption and a legal assertion?
Do you understand the difference between an assumption and a legal presumption?
Objection, vague. Are we talking about this first sentence or just that standalone question?
I'm asking about the first sentence. Um, I'll rephrase it. Do you, do you know what a legal presumption is?
Not specifically.
Okay, thank you. And on lines nineteen through twenty, can you read that sentence, please?
Water collected from these substantial depths and the maximum flow from these facilities bear no relationship to flow from surface water expressions that may have existed under pre-development conditions.
Did you conduct any quantitative analysis comparing pre-development conditions to current water collection?
I didn't conduct any quantitative analysis of pre-development conditions.
Okay. Can we go to page three? Actually, can we look at BTB four? Page three.
Okay, we'll get exhibit BTB four. This was one of the exhibits admitted during the first phase of this hearing. And I guess we're now on page three of exhibit BTB four. Go ahead with your question.
Uh, Mr. Nichols, do you recognize this?
I do.
Did you prepare this?
I did.
Is that date, when is the date, April ten, twenty eighteen, when you prepared this document?
Um, can we scroll down a little bit?
Yeah, that would help. Miss Mullen, maybe you can zoom out one notch, so we can look at a little more of the page.
Yeah. As I understand it, that date is correct?
And we look at page three, the bottom paragraph, excuse me. Yeah, the bottom paragraph.
Okay, and Mr. Petrazelli, this is, the page numbering is a little unclear here, 'cause the first page of the memo is page three of the PDF file, so do you want page three of the memo or page three of the PDF file?
Uh, Mr. Lilly, when I refer to page numbers, uh, I will almost always be referring to the page of the PDF.
All right, good. And that's fine, just so we know, so where, where, where you wanna be. Go ahead.
So, uh, so, Mr. Nichols, uh, can you read, let's, I wanna refer you to this paragraph at the bottom, and then it continues on to the next page. And if you can take a moment to read that paragraph, and then continue to the end of the paragraph on the next page, and if you can tell me when you're done.
And just so we're clear, you wanted to read it out loud or just to himself?
Uh, just read it to yourself.
Okay, we can.
Blow it up.
Yeah, let's, Miss Mullen, if you can, just explain, for those of us with old eyes, not that Mr. Nichols is old, but I'm old, it would help. There we go, thank you. And so we'll read it to ourselves, and Mr. Nichols, tell us when you're ready to go to the next page.
I'm ready to go to the next page.
Okay.
I've completed.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, with respect to the tunnels and boreholes you described in this document, was capturing spring water a purpose of constructing those tunnels and boreholes?
Objection as to the term spring water?
Um, the objection is overruled. He, he uses the term spring water in the memo, so I'm sure he can explain what he meant by spring water if necessary.
And certainly, there is a distinction between, um, FDA-defined spring water and spring water that we might refer to as a surface water expression. In particular, the tunnels and boreholes were to, uh, collect water from the same underground formation from which natural spring expressions occurred, but it wasn't necessarily to, uh, produce water from those, uh, surface spring, from those surface water expressions.
Well, I'll ask, I'll ask you about some of the FDA regulations, uh, later on. Um, but, did the tunnels and boreholes? And I'm not sure if you answered the question, so I'll ask it again. Was capturing spring water a purpose of constructing the tunnels and boreholes?
Um, I, I, I suppose that speaks to the, to the, to the intent at the time they were constructed, and of course, I wasn't there, but they were certainly to collect water.
Did the tunnels and boreholes achieve the purpose of capturing spring water?
Uh, I, again, I would, I would defer to the definition of, of the distinction between spring water as defined in FDA uh, regulations versus spring water as commonly understood as a surface water expression.
Can we go to the second paragraph? Can we focus on the second paragraph? Okay, and that first sentence, uh, can you take a moment to read it?
Yes.
And tell me when you've read it?
Yes.
Is it reasonable to assume that a fraction of the diverted water would have been intercepted before discharging at a spring site?
It is.
Okay. And then this same paragraph, uh, fourth line down, starting with at the time of construction. And then to the end of the paragraph. And, Mr. Lilly, I don't know if we have the capacity to put two documents on the screen at the same time to do kind of a text comparison.
Um, I don't know either. We've never done that, so I'll just ask any of my staff if any of you want to speak up and tell me whether or not we can do that. Give them a moment, they may have to decide. They're all in different locations, too.
That, that's fine, I'll, I'll move, I'll move on. Um.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I just don't think we, I don't know that we can do that.
Yeah. On fourth paragraph.
Just to clarify though, Mr. Petrazelli, we're more than happy to go back and forth if we.
Yeah.
Here's my text message. I don't think we can, so sorry.
Well, that answers the question.
We're, we're pretty darn good with our technology, but there are limits. So go ahead, and, and if, if necessary, we'll flip back and forth.
Okay, um, actually, yes, let's look at exhibit BTB two, page twenty-eight.
BTB two, page twenty. Okay, where, where, tell us where to scroll to.
We can look at the third paragraph.
Okay. Maybe we should, if you can help me, um, first of all, Miss Mullen, we gotta figure out who wrote this memo and when, so maybe you can scroll up. I don't know how many pages, but can you just go up page by page to the first page of this memo? I think it's, that's pretty important. Well, this is page eleven, so.
No, no wonder I didn't recognize it.
Go up to about page twelve and, okay, so. Where are we now? Is that page, is that? I can't see a page number here. Can you scroll down and we'll see where we, oh, that's page one, or go to about page eleven, maybe, or just, yeah, go through page by page and we'll see where we are. Okay, so go back, Miss Mullen, thank you, spare with me, go back up a few pages. One more, a couple more pages up. Back up one more. All right, there. So, Mr. Petrazelli and, and Mr. Nichols, it appears that the page twenty that Mr. Petrazelli was asking you, Mr. Nichols, about is part of a February nine twenty-nine, uh, tw- two thousand eighteen letter, uh, from Rita Maguire uh, to, um, Mr. Vasquez at the, uh, State Water Resource Control Board Division of Water Rights Enforcement Unit. So, with that, Mr. Petrazelli, now do you wanna go to page twenty and ask Mr. Nichols about this? I, I think it's important to make sure we know whether it's his memo or somebody else's memo.
Yeah, it, it is. Um, it's page twenty-eight of the PDF.
Twenty or twenty-eight? We were on twenty before.
Eight.
Okay, go to page twenty-eight? Okay, and this is, okay, number of page twenty, so this is still, as far as I can tell, part of Ms. Maguire's letter.
Yeah, and the third paragraph?
Okay, so we'll scroll down and make it a little bigger then. Third paragraph starts out at the time of construction.
And, um.
Bear with us, it'll come back. This is not easy, by the way, what Smullen does, and she does it very well, so be a little patient, uh, but we'll get there. Okay, so now we can scroll down to the third paragraph, if I think. There we go. All right, at the time of construction, go ahead with your question.
So, Mr. Nichols, if you can read, if you can read aloud the first, um, from the beginning of that paragraph until about line six, until you get to groundwater?
I, I'm gonna object, just to clarify, we're having Mr. Nichols, you're asking him to read out loud something that he didn't write, which has not been the practice through the this hearing thus far.
Well, well, actually, that's an interesting question, and that's why I'm asking him to read this.
I, I, I'm gonna, if that was an objection, I'm overruling it. I think it certainly is appropriate for Mr. Petrazelli. I, asking him to read it is just so we can all get on the same page, literally. And then if he wants to ask him a question, like whether or not he agrees with this statement that was made by one of Blue Triton's attorneys, I think that is perfectly appropriate. So, um, Mr. Nichols, why don't you go ahead and just read slowly out loud, uh, the first two sentences in this paragraph, and then Mr. Petrazelli may ask you a question.
The time of construction of each of the tunnels and boreholes, no consideration was given to differentiating the fractions of surface water or groundwater as developed water because the predecessors in interest to NWNA had not, had been adjudicated to hold rights to both types of water within Strawberry Canyon. Consequently, no data presently exists that may be used to determine the fraction of developed water from each tunnel and borehole that is surface water and the fraction that is groundwater.
Thank you, and then if we can go back to BTB four, page three, second paragraph.
Okay, Mr. Petrazelli, you want the paragraph that says NWNA looks forward to working with the state water board?
You know, actually, uh, keep going, I think I have my page wrong. I'm looking for a paragraph that begins at the time of construction.
Okay, we'll go down slowly. There may be a confusion here between PDF page numbers and other page numbers. Let's scroll one more page, see if it shows up.
Actually, can, can you go up, can you go up?
Okay.
It's on page four. Let's see.
We might need to go up one more page then. No, that was page four of the PDF file.
Yeah.
So we'll go back down to page, PDF page four. Tell us where you want us to go.
Wait, 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 you're, you're going too fast. Uh, there it is, there it is. Actually, it's, um, the part of the screen that I can see, it's on the second line.
Okay, so Miss Mullen, just scroll up so we have that whole paragraph in view. There, okay, go ahead.
Uh, one, two, three, four, five, I think it's on the fifth line, it begins at the time of construction. Can, can you read that, Mr. Nichols?
At the time of construction of each of the tunnels and boreholes, no consideration was given to differentiating the fraction of surface water or other water that was collected because the predecessors in interest to NWNA had adjudicated water rights within Strawberry Canyon.
And then, can you read again to the end of the paragraph?
Consequently, few data presently exist that may be used to determine the fraction of surface water surface water flowing from water at each tunnel and borehole.
So, would, would you say that, 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 that this portion, and then let's go back to the portion we just read in BTB two? Can we look at that?
Okay, we'll go back.
Just wanna make sure we can compare these.
Yeah, we're doing the best we can here. Okay, so we have that paragraph there at the time of construction. All right, so what, what is your question?
Notwithstanding the difference between the word no data and few data, would you say that these are identical or substantially identical? Mr. Nichols?
Well, they, they certainly make similar statements.
Okay. Did, did you write this statement?
Uh, which, which document?
Did you write this statement in BTB two? Did you write this statement in BTB two?
I don't believe I did.
Can we go back to BTB four?
Okay, and this, just so we're clear, Mr. Nichols, we're doing a little back and forth here. I assume you did write the statement in your memo, is that correct?
I did.
And you're saying you do not believe you wrote the statement in Ms. Maguire's letter, is that correct?
I, I didn't author that letter. If text was shared between the documents, that, I mean, that's possible.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Petrazzelli. I just, this is a little confusing. It's not your fault, but we're trying to make sure we know which docs we're talking about here.
Mr. Nichols, did you originate this text?
Objection. Which document are we talking about?
Did you originate this text in BTB four?
To the best of my recollection, yes.
Okay. So you wrote this in a subsequently dated document, and it appeared almost identical in a previously dated document.
Objection, asked and answered.
Well, he hasn't, he hasn't asked a question yet, so I don't know what his question's going to be. What is your question? Okay, you better, better state it again because I interrupted, but just say one more time. And I'm going to overrule the objection. This is a we're doing the best we can with two docs here, so if it's a little repetitive, let's just go ahead.
Mr. Lilly, Ms. Mullen is doing a fantastic job.
So just go ahead and ask your question. This greatest objection has been noted and overruled.
Okay, so, Mr. Nichols, you are saying that you originated this text from beginning in BTB four, on page, PDF page four, beginning with the words "at the time of construction" in this document whose date comes after the date of BTB two. Let me rephrase that. Is it correct that you, Mr. Nichols, is it correct that you originated this language in BTB four?
I think.
Which then appeared verbatim in a previously, in the previously dated BTB two?
I, I certainly originated the document BTB four. The fact that a similar statement is made using similar language in previous document doesn't mean that I didn't originate the actual document BTB four. We, of course, work as a team and concepts that are developed in text might, might end up with common phraseology. And so, did I author that sentence originally, notwithstanding subtle changes to that sentence? Again, the concept is valid. The document originated with me.
Did you originate this concept?
Objection, asked and answered.
I asked if he originated the text, and Mr. Nichols is distinguishing between the text and the context. So I want to know if he originated the concept.
The concept with regards to how much data exists to distinguish between groundwater and surface water?
The concept expressed in this second half of this paragraph on page four, beginning with the phrase "at the time of construction."
I don't recall what conversations were had during the development of the two documents and what you know, where this concept arose, but certainly the statement is true that few data exist differentiating the fraction of surface water and groundwater at any of these sources in pre-development times.
Can we now look at? Can we scroll down to, I think it's the fourth paragraph in this, on this page?
Just for the record, can I say we're at BTB four, just because we've gone back and forth?
Yeah.
Okay, we're on page four of BTB four. Do you want the paragraph that begins the approach taken?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Nichols, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Lilly.
Go ahead.
Mr. Nichols, can you, can you read that paragraph?
The approach taken by the board to determine the portion of surface water at spring seven and spring 10, 11, 12 sites is reasonable based on available data. No analyses were performed by SWRCB for spring areas 1, 1A and 8, spring area 2, or spring area 3, due to the lack of available data for these sites.
So was it reasonable that no analysis was done for those sites 1, 1A, 8, spring areas 2 and 3, due to the lack of available data for those sites?
If I could have you ask that question one more time, please, I'm not sure I got it all.
Was it reasonable that no analysis was performed for boreholes 1, 1A and 8 and tunnels 2 and 3, given the lack of available data for those sites?
I don't have an opinion with regards to whether it was reasonable or not, if that was the condition at the time.
Okay. Can we go back to BTB two, page 28?
All right.
And then I would like to go down to the bottom paragraph on this page. Thank you. And can we read the first sentence?
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm at the right place. Is this where it says?
Mr. Nichols, I'm sorry.
Are you at the paragraph that begins the approach taken by the board? Okay, go ahead with your question.
Mr. Nichols, can you read this paragraph, this first sentence in this paragraph out loud, please?
The approach taken by the board to determine the portion of surface water in the developed water at the sevens, 10, 11, and 12 spring sites is reasonable and based on available data.
Thank you. And if I remember correctly, the date of this document was in February 2018? Can we go back?
Just so we're clear, Mr. Petrazzelli, my oh, I'm sorry, was BTB two, I'm sorry, I don't have the date. What was the date of that?
It was, it was in, it was February 2018.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, I interrupted. My apologies. What, so what is your question?
So, I'm, I'm I just want us to remember the context of these two documents, which one came first?
All right, so what is your question? This is the February 2018 letter by Ms. Maguire?
Yes.
What is your question?
So, let's go back, can we go back to BTB four, please?
All right, we have that. And this is the April 2018 memo from Mr. Nichols.
Yes, April 2018. Can we read this paragraph again out loud?
The approach taken by the board to determine the portion of surface water at spring seven and spring 10, 11, and 12 sites is reasonable based on available data. No analysis.
That's, um. No, that's correct. Can, can you read that again?
Why doesn't he read the next sentence? Now, he's already read that first sentence twice.
No analyses were performed by SWRCB for spring areas 1, 1A and 8, spring area 2, or spring area 3, due to lack of available data for these sites.
Okay. And then can we go back to BTB two, just so we can see it? It's hard for me not having these side by side.
All right, let's go back.
So let's look at that first sentence. Is that, and Mr. Nichols, is that first sentence identical to the first sentence in the paragraph you just read in BTB four?
Objection, the documents speak for themselves.
Objection is overruled.
Are you asking me to read the sentence?
I'm asking you if they're identical.
I have a similar, a similar challenge to you. Without seeing them side by side, I couldn't answer that definitively, but they, they appear similar, yes.
Okay. Did you write this sentence?
Um, so.
Objection. We can look at the author of the document at the top and make sure also when we're asking these questions, we're clear about which document we're talking about. We are flipping back and forth.
This is Ms. Maguire's letter. The question is whether he wrote this sentence. He currently was working with Ms. Maguire at the time, so the objection is overruled. You may answer the question if you remember.
If, if you could repeat the question.
Mr. Nichols, did you write this first sentence in the paragraph at the bottom of PDF page 28 of BTB two?
BTB two being Ms. Maguire's document?
Yes.
I, I don't have any recollection of writing this sentence in this document.
Okay. And you, and was it your testimony that this sentence is identical to a sentence in BTB four?
Objection, this states testimony.
Hey, he said, he, Mr. Petrazzelli, he said as far as his recollection was, they appeared to be the same, but wasn't sure. Not being able to flip back and forth, so.
Well.
What, I, I guess we've spent a lot of time on this. What is the point you're trying to make here?
Um. I'm trying to find out if there are certain ideas expressed in BTB four that Mr. Nichols developed, or that Ms. Maguire developed. Because there are identically stated sentences that are either identical or substantially identical. And I'm trying to find out who originated those sentences, or at least originated those concepts.
So I'm going to have to object on the basis of attorney work product, to the extent documents are created with retention of an expert before litigation. This is, this line of questioning is just, it's improper and, quite bluntly, it's not relevant to whether or not the state has established it has permitting authority and the CDO should issue.
It's.
Okay, wait, wait, let, let me rule on the objection.
Okay.
Um. To, to the extent the objection is based on the fact that this is an attorney work product privilege, it's overruled, because once Mr. Nichols offered, and for that matter, Blue Trident offered this exhibit into evidence, they waived any work, claim of work product privilege as to discussions between him and Trident's attorneys. However, on the question, the objection of whether or not this is relevant, I'm going to sustain that. Mr. Petrazzelli, I you know, this is, this is laborious, and I understand you're doing the best you can when you can have two documents on the screen at the same time, but frankly, I'll just say, I don't see the point here. I mean, I don't think there's any secret, Mr. Nichols has said this, that he and Ms. Maguire and others were part of a team that developed these documents. You can't exactly remember what he wrote and what Ms. Maguire wrote, but I'm not sure that's particularly relevant to our hearing. I mean, the documents are here and they, they speak for themselves.
I'm merely trying to assess whether Mr. Nichols prepared his memorandum in BTB four independently, or whether the concepts were developed at the direction of legal counsel.
Okay, why don't you just ask him that question?
Okay, let's go back.
About this memorandum, that's, this April 2018 memorandum. Let's just get to the point here.
Then let's go back to BTB four. And this paragraph that starts with the approach taken by the board. Mr. Nichols, did you write this sentence at the direction of legal counsel?
I was not directed by legal counsel in preparation of this document. That said, I would like to discuss the context of this document and the other one that we're comparing it to.
If I could, I think that would be useful. Maybe we can cut through this, so please go ahead and do that.
If we could scroll to the top of this document. I'd like to see the, the title and subject line again.
Okay. I think we want the third page, which is the first page of your memo. Is that where you want to be?
Right.
Or did you, okay.
Right.
So what is, what is your comment about the context?
This works in, in, in frankly, as we see in the subject line, this document is it, it, you know, describes an investigation and monitoring plan as required by the 2017 report of investigation. The other document that we're talking about, I believe, is dated in February, and was the direct response, I believe, to the, to the 2017 report of investigation. The fact that the two documents share concepts and share language certainly grows out of the fact that they, they came from the same request from the 2017 ROI. In, in, of course, as stated, we work as a team. Whether a particular sentence originated in February or in April, I, I think doesn't change the material fact of what those sentences are saying and the fact that they're true.
All right, thank you for that explanation, Mr. Nichols. Mr. Petrazzelli, I'm not sure he has answered your question now, so but with that context, I think you can ask your question again. We'll just, let's just ask it one more time, we'll be done with this. I think her question was basically, did he prepare that sentence on his own, or did someone else prepare it, or was it prepared collaboratively? Is that what you want to get at here?
Yes.
All right, so let's just go to that next page, Ms. Mullen, one more time, next page. Down there. Okay, the, the sentence, it's the paragraph that starts out, the approach taken. Mr. Nichols, did you prepare this? Did you get this from Ms. Maguire? Or was there some team effort that led to the text in this paragraph?
I, I didn't receive any, any text from Ms. Maguire. I may have borrowed text from the earlier memorandum.
What do you mean by the earlier memorandum? You mean the February letter?
Yes.
All right, so I think, Mr. Petrazzelli, we've covered this pretty well. Maybe you can move on.
Yeah, I, I believe we've covered it.
And actually, now, we've, we've gone almost two hours. Our court reporter is laboring away with all of us talking faster than we should. So let's take a break. It's 2:53 on my clock. Let's break until 3:10, and we'll get started again there. And again, you can turn off your camera and microphone, but please do not log off. We'll be back at 3:10.
All right.
I don't know where the surface expressions of those springs were located in, in most cases. In, in so I can't answer that question definitively.
Okay. During the site visit on February 17, did you characterize the entire area around boreholes 10, 12 as the spring or spring orifice?
I, I don't know what you mean as the entire area.
Okay. On, can we? But similarly, does your report in BTB seven acknowledge that the size and extent of the discharge area around borehole springs 10 through 12 changes throughout the year in response to seasonal changes, including natural precipitation and recharge cycles?
The, the, the surface expression just changed throughout the year, yes.
Okay. So it can become bigger or it can become smaller depending on conditions?
Yes.
Okay. And back, if we can go back to BTB six.
Right, let's get BTB six on the screen. What page would you like us to go to?
We can go to page four, line 23.
All right, so Miss Ma, it's just like we're on the last paragraph there, make it a little bigger. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Petrazelli.
Actually, if we can look at page, line four, starting with there are no points.
Line four?
Yes, line 24, line 24, okay.
Okay.
Mr. Nichols, can you read that sentence beginning with there are no points and ending with Strawberry Canyon on page 26, on line 26?
There are no points of diversion constructed at ground surface such as head gates, plumes, weirs, headworks, or other structures designed to divert water from the creek channel in Strawberry Canyon.
Okay, thank you. Do the valves for the boreholes, are the valves for the boreholes located at or above the ground surface?
They're located above ground surface.
Okay, thank you. And then if we can go to page five, line 17. Can you read that sentence on line 17, starting with water is carried?
Water is carried by truck from a load station at the Arrowhead Hotel campus to bottling facilities where it is bottled in accordance with regulations set forth in Code of Federal Regulations Title 21, parenz 21 CFR, close parenz, part 165.
And then in the next paragraph, paragraph 15, do you go on to describe or summarize those regulations?
Not in their entirety.
But you're, okay. And are those, those are the regulations applicable to the classification of spring water for the Food and Drug Administration, is that correct?
They define spring water as a food product.
But are those the regulations that the Food and Drug Administration uses to classify spring water?
Objection, legal conclusion?
The objection is sustained, Mr. Petrazelli. I think under these circumstances, it's best to ask Mr. Nichols what his understanding is of these regulations. Clearly, number one, he doesn't appear to have any training as a lawyer, but number two, he's worked a lot with these regulations. So he probably has a pretty good understanding. So I think if you ask him your understanding, his understanding, you can get past the objection.
Yeah. Mr. Nichols, is it your understanding that the Code of Federal Regulations Title 21, Part 165, is the regulation applicable to defining spring water for the Food and Drug Administration?
It defines spring water as a food product category, yes.
Okay. Then can we look at exhibit PT 23?
Okay, this is one we have not yet posted today, so it'll take a moment to get it posted, but we will. All right.
Excuse me. Um, Mr. Nichols, are you familiar with this document?
If I could see the full cover page and maybe the first few pages of it, I appreciate it.
Okay, there's the cover page. It looks, just shows the record states, March 1999, Davis and Moore Report.
That's enough, and I do believe I'm familiar with it.
Okay. Can we look at page 15? Page 14. Thank you. In this top paragraph in the bold print, Mr. Nichols, does this look like part of the FDA regulation defining spring water as you understand it?
It appears as though they cited, cited a portion of this from that.
Okay. And can you read the first sentence, please?
Can we expand it a bit?
Okay. Okay.
The name of water derived from an underground formation from which water flows naturally to the surface of the earth may be spring water.
Okay, so to have spring water as the FDA defined it, must there be water flowing naturally to the surface of the earth?
The answer to that question is a little bit more complex than, than, than the question, but for the, as, as we understand the use of boreholes, horizontal boreholes, and, and other type facilities, yes, there needs to be a spring water expression somewhere.
Okay. So do tunnels, then do tunnels two and three divert water from springs two and three respectively?
Objection, clarifying use of the word spring or springs as you're using it in the question, please.
Um, I'm, okay, why don't you read, I'll sustain the objection, Mr. Petrazelli, why don't you just ask it in terms of whether these tunnels divert water from the sites of the former springs? I think that's what we're getting at, since he's testified there are no springs there anymore.
Does, do spring tunnels two and three divert water from the former spring sites, two and three?
I don't know where the surface expressions of springs two and three were historically.
Okay. Can we look at, um, lower down on this page and below spring, the word spring two? Actually, that's, that's great, having a whole paragraph. Mr. Nichols, can you read that for, the first sentence of that paragraph below spring number two?
Spring number two is a natural spring that has been improved by the installation of engineered collection facilities consisting of a hand dug tunnel and water collection piping. Figure one, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you. Can you continue?
Did you intend for me to read the whole paragraph?
Just that first sentence.
Oh.
Okay. Um, so is spring two a natural spring?
Objection, I think we've got some lack of clarity in the use of the word spring. So we've discussed an FDA definition. And if you're asking in the context of the FDA definition, can you state the question that way? And if you're asking in a different context, can you please clarify?
I'm going to overrule the objection. I think it's pretty clear that Mr. Petrazelli is asking Mr. Nichols about spring two as the term is used in this paragraph. So why don't you just state the question again, maybe using that words, spring number two as the term is used in this paragraph?
Mr. Nichols, is spring number two a natural spring as the term spring is used in this paragraph?
Objection, and again, this is, Mr. Nichols did not write this document and I, and I don't understand the question. Are you asking him to interpret it? I genuinely don't understand.
I'm asking him if, if it's a natural spring. I mean, was, was this a spring where like water came out of the ground on the surface?
Okay, so let me try here. I think I can cut through this. So, Mr. Nichols, is spring number two, as the term is defined in this paragraph, a natural spring?
So as, as the paragraph states, you know, the spring has been improved by installation of the tunnel. And so with regards to a natural spring, I don't, I don't have an opinion with regards to whether the actual location where the water comes out is a natural feature or not. It seems as though obviously it's been improved by the tunnel. And I don't know how to answer that question further.
Okay. Let me go to the next page. And actually, this is, and if we can focus on this figure one dash three.
Okay, Miss Ma, maybe go out one notch, just so we're sure we have the whole figure. Okay, good, thank you. And if you need to zoom back in, Mr. Petrazelli, go ahead, but I wanted to make sure we all could see the whole figure at least to start with.
Okay, thank you. Um, where does figure one dash three depict the location of the spring?
Figure one dash three, as I understand it, is a, is a schematic drawing of tunnel two, of the interior of tunnel two. And within that drawing, there are, I see three areas that are called spring. Although my understanding of a spring orifice is a location where the water table intersects ground surface, clearly these features are beneath the ground surface. And I would not have used the term spring to, to describe these, these features inside the tunnel.
We go to page 15, please. And the heading, spring three. Thank you. Um, can you read the first sentence aloud, please?
Spring number three is a natural spring that like spring number two has been improved by the installation of engineered collection facilities.
So is spring number three a natural spring as the term spring is used in this document?
I think, Mr. Petrazelli, you want to, I want you to state it a different way. It's, it's, is spring number three as that term is defined in this document, a natural spring?
Yes. Mr. Lilly, I did my, I did my best to try to remember the way you asked the question.
Let's go ahead and ask it that way.
Okay.
If you, you know, to the extent you know or have an opinion, Mr. Nichols.
I'm going to object again, because we've had, and I apologize, I'm not trying to be difficult, but we've got an FDA definition in here, and Mr. Nichols has just separately and differently defined the word spring. And I'm really having a hard time and don't want a confused record.
I think Mr. Nichols is doing a good job of stating his understanding based on all his experience and expertise and education of what springs are and how these springs fit into or do not fit into that definition to the extent of his knowledge about the historical condition. So I'm going to overrule the objection. Go ahead, Mr. Nichols, I'll just ask it one more time. Is, is spring number three as the term is used in this paragraph, a natural spring?
In my answer will be similar to, to, to the question asked at tunnel two. Of course, the, I don't know where the, the pre-development spring orifice was located. And of course, the improvement of the tunnel itself certainly is where the water flows from now. I don't have a way to describe the tunnel as a natural feature. And I think that's, that's all I can say at this moment regarding the tunnel and the spring orifice.
Thank you. Can we scroll down to page 16, figure one dash five? Mr. Nichols, does this figure one dash five depict the spring number three collection facility?
This, this is a series of drawings that shows the configuration and construction of the, of the tunnel and some of the features inside the tunnel.
Okay. And I think we'll probably have to zoom in so we can see one of the top portion of this figure, because at least for me, the print is a little small. Okay, okay. And, um, does, does this paragraph, does this figure depict the location of a spring?
I, I think that I, I see the word spring. It's a little bit fuzzy, but I believe I see concrete lined spring. Is that the text you're referring to?
Yes, is that in the near the top of the, of this figure?
Right, I see where that text is used. And again, similar to my answer at, at tunnel two, I understand there's water inflow at that point, but also my understanding of a, of a, of a spring is where the water table would intersect the ground surface. And of course, this is beneath the ground surface.
If you took the top off the tunnel, would it still be beneath the ground surface?
Wait, 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 wait. I think you've got to be a little more clear. That's an incomplete hypothetical.
I'm sorry.
If you want to ask that question, you have to be clear about what taking the top off the tunnel means.
Okay. If you excavated off the dirt and roof on the top of the tunnel, so it were exposed to air, would this feature labeled as concrete line spring still be underground?
In that, in the context of that hypothetical, it would not still be underground. However, that's not how the tunnels were constructed.
And if we can go to page 17? Oh, um, did you see the tunnels constructed?
I did not.
Okay. And under borehole number seven? Okay.
Do you want to keep going down?
No, I think this is, keep going down. You might have to keep going down. I'm looking for something that says under boreholes number seven. Okay, yeah, that's, that's what I want. Okay. Um, can you read this first sentence, groundwater, groundwater discharging at spring seven?
And just for the record, I think we're on page 18 of exhibit PT 23, so go ahead.
Groundwater discharging at spring number seven is intercepted by boreholes number seven, number seven A, number seven B, and number seven C.
If not intercepted, what would happen to that water?
It would remain in the subsurface.
Yeah. If the boreholes had not been constructed, what would have happened to that water?
Relative to the other infrastructure at the site, we would reasonably expect it to discharge from the from the tunnel seven or, or the, the concrete feature constructed on the hill above the boreholes.
If the boreholes and tunnel seven had not been constructed, what would have happened to that water that is described as being intercepted?
Well, it would have remained in the subsurface and, and based on the first line of this, of this sentence, it says that a fraction of that water, some portion of that water might have discharged at spring number seven.
Discharged where?
It says at spring number seven.
Discharged where? Discharged.
Objection asked and answered. You're asking him to, to give you an answer about a document he didn't write, and he answered.
Well, I'm asking.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna overrule the objection. As I understand, if I'm following this right, the question is if neither the boreholes nor the tunnel had been constructed at this location, would groundwater discharge to the surface at this location? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Alright, so you may go ahead and answer that question.
Mr. Nichols, had tunnel seven and the its associated boreholes not been constructed, would the water that is described as being intercepted discharge to the surface?
Some portion of it, yes.
Thank you. Can we go to page eleven, please? And I'd like to look at the bottom paragraph. Can you read this paragraph aloud, please?
The one that begins historically?
Yes.
Historically, there was an original spring, spring number one, that was located in the vicinity of current spring number four. Years ago, a horizontal borehole was drilled at the location of spring number one. This borehole was later plugged by gravity, and today there is no flow from spring number one.
So does spring number one still discharge water to the surface?
Objection, which spring number one?
Spring, that's spring number one, as described in this paragraph, still discharge water to the surface?
The objection is overruled. You may answer regarding spring number one as the term is used in this paragraph.
I don't know the location of the feature that was referred to in the Dames and Moore report as, as spring number one. Or you know, specifically where the spring orifice might have been, been located relative to borehole number one.
And
So, I'm gonna just interrupt while we're here. I was wondering, Mr. Nichols, there is a borehole number one, which we saw when we were on the site visit, which is I think approximately thirty feet in elevation above boreholes one A and eight. Do you have any information as to whether there historically was a spring at that side of borehole one? I mean, just based on the numbering system, I'm wondering if that indicates that that's where spring one was. And that seems to be what this is saying here. But do you have any information about that?
I, I don't have any information beyond what's contained in the Dames and Moore report, so this document that we're looking at. And I don't know what information they base these statements on in particular. And so we haven't, we haven't been able to locate or I should say, we haven't correlated features that they're describing with features that we observed today.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Petrazzelli, you may proceed.
Okay, and Mr. Lilly, I've been noticing a little bit of, you know, distortion in your audio when you, when you speak.
Yeah, I have some gardeners making noise outside, so I've been trying to mute where I'm not talking. They should be gone momentarily, but you may proceed. That's the problem.
Okay, thank you. Can we go to page twenty-three, please? Oh, Mr. Nichols, you indicated you had when you said you had no information beyond the Dames and Moore report, are you familiar with the hydrodynamics group reports from nineteen ninety-eight?
I'm, I'm aware that that work was done. I haven't, I haven't looked at those documents in many years, but I know they exist.
Okay.
In, in my understanding would be, I don't, I don't think they have historical information beyond what Dames and Moore had. And these, these were about at the same, they were produced at about the same period as I recall.
But you're not familiar with them?
Not in, not in regards to historical information that, that they may include.
Correct. Um, can we look at page twenty-three of this document, PT twenty-three, please? Okay. Can we look at the third paragraph? First two sentences. And can you read those two sentences, please?
The paragraph beginning with spring number one, is that correct?
Yes.
Spring number one was partially developed in nineteen thirty-two and completed in nineteen forty-eight by Mr. J. H. Hibner. This original development was abandoned and replaced by a horizontal borehole in June nineteen seventy-six. Spring number eight was developed about fifty feet west of spring number one in nineteen fifty and redeveloped in nineteen sixty-six. The original spring development was abandoned and a new borehole, borehole number eight was installed in August of nineteen ninety-three. Borehole number one A was installed between boreholes number one and number eight in August of nineteen ninety-three.
So what borehole replaced the original development of spring one as original development is used in this paragraph?
My understanding would be that it was borehole number one.
Okay, is that borehole used today?
Yes.
Is that where spring one now discharges?
There isn't discharge at, at borehole one, or there isn't surface discharge at borehole one that I know of.
Does borehole one discharge water?
Yes.
And you said it's not a surface discharge. So where does it discharge water?
It's through the pipe.
Okay. So if not for the pipe connection, where would borehole one discharge water? Would it discharge water at the surface?
Objection, the borehole is I think you're completing borehole and pipe.
Alright, I'm gonna overrule the objection. Well, as I understand the question, Mr. Petrazzelli, correct me if I'm wrong, I think your question is if borehole number one had not been constructed, where would spring number one discharge today? Is that what you're asking? Alright, so, Mr. Nichols, you may answer that question.
I don't know at, at what location it would discharge. And I would add that, that of course, we conducted long period shut-in tests at borehole one to see if there would be, partly to see if there would be a surface water expression generated in the vicinity of the borehole or above the borehole, and we didn't detect any.
I'll ask you about that later. If borehole one were not connected to the pipe, to the pipeline, would it discharge water to the surface?
Objection, what is the pipeline? I'm genuinely having a hard time following the question.
So, Mr. Petrazzelli, is this a question different from if borehole number one had never been constructed?
Yeah, let's move on.
Okay.
So with respect to spring eight, do you know where spring eight is now? Today?
I don't, I don't have any knowledge of a, of a surface expression called spring eight or its location.
Okay. And I ask you to revisit the third line in this paragraph, starting with spring number eight?
Yes. Would you like me to read it again?
Yes, please.
Spring number eight was developed about fifty feet west of spring number one in nineteen fifty and redeveloped in nineteen sixty-six.
Can you read the next sentence as well, please?
The original spring development was abandoned and a new borehole, borehole number eight was installed in August nineteen ninety-three.
So, based on your understanding of this, these two sentences, does borehole number eight, as we know it today, capture water previously diverted at spring number eight?
I don't know what spring number eight was with regards to a surface expression or its relationship to borehole number eight.
You know that borehole, if borehole number eight break that. Can we go to page fifteen in the third paragraph? Can we, can we keep going? I'm looking for something under the words borehole number eight. Keep going. Let's, let's go up. Okay. Can we go up some more, please?
I think it's with one six. With spring one. Or I six.
Actually, let's go to page twenty-one. Okay. So, under borehole ten. Under the words borehole ten, can we scroll down some more? More, please. Actually, let's go up. Okay, let, let's stop. And can you read this first?
Can we first just clarify that for the record, what page? We've done a lot of scrolling and moving around.
Yeah, what, what page of the PDF are we on?
I think this is page twenty-one.
Okay. So, Mr. Nichols, can you read this first sentence, please?
Groundwater discharging from springs number ten, number eleven, and number twelve is intercepted by boreholes number ten, number eleven, and number twelve. Did you?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
If not, if the boreholes ten, eleven, and twelve had not been constructed, would the water that is, that this paragraph described as being intercepted discharge to the surface?
Some fraction of it.
Okay. Can we look at BTB seven, please? And page seven hundred and forty. Can we look at the second paragraph? Can you read that first sentence, please, Mr. Nichols?
Can we enlarge it? Boreholes ten, eleven, and twelve are horizontal boreholes that were drilled in the late nineteen seventies for the purpose of intercepting spring water flowing to the surface of the earth at the lower spring complex and have been used continually to produce spring water since that time.
Is the lower spring complex, as you use that term in this memorandum, is that springs ten, eleven, and twelve?
Yes.
Okay. So, in this memorandum, do you describe boreholes ten through twelve as being drilled for the purpose of intercepting spring water flowing to the surface?
That's, yes, that's what the sentence says, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Can we look at page seven hundred and forty-three, please? And then, under spring water boreholes. Can you read the first sentence, please?
Boreholes ten, eleven, and twelve were drilled up gradient of the lower spring complex for the purpose of intersecting bedrock fractures that convey groundwater through the fractured quartz mazanite toward the lower spring complex.
If those boreholes had not been drilled, what would have happened with that groundwater have discharged to the surface?
Some fraction of it may have.
Okay. Would you say that boreholes ten through twelve accomplished a purpose of intercepting water flowing to the surface at springs ten through twelve?
They successfully intersected fractures in the formation from which springs ten, eleven, twelve flow, yes.
And when you say flow, does that, does that mean that they would have discharged water to the surface had the boreholes not been constructed?
Some fraction of that water.
Okay, thank you. Can we go back to BTB six? Page six. Can we look at paragraph 18? Actually, 18 and 19. Um. I realize 19 is on the next page. Mr. Nichols, can you take a moment to read paragraph 18? And then, when you're ready, ask to look at, turn to the next page and read paragraph 19.
This is just reading to yourself, Mr. Nichols.
Thank you. Can we enlarge it?
We'll make it one notch bigger. There we go.
I'm ready to go to the next page. I've read it.
Thank you. Do you list any legal training in your qualifications?
I don't have any.
Okay, are you a lawyer?
I'm not.
Did you prepare paragraphs 18 and 19 yourself?
Can I look at paragraph 18? Again?
Scroll up, there we are.
Yes, I did prepare that paragraph. And, and, and I did obtain some of those references from members of our legal team.
Okay. Do you know if these references listed in paragraph 18, do you know if any of them involve the diversion of water from a natural spring?
Not specifically.
Okay.
Wait, wait. That's not clear. Does that mean you don't know that, or you know that they do not?
I don't know that.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just a little unclear. Do you know if the cases referenced in paragraph 18 involve the diversion of water from a natural spring?
I don't know.
Okay. Do you know if any cases have overruled these cases that you reference in paragraph 18?
I don't know.
You know? I bullet can, and can we scroll down some more? Actually, to the next page. In paragraph 19, you reference in your testimony decision 1645. To your knowledge, is there any board order or decision applying decision 1645 to a spring diversion?
I don't know.
Thank you. So, do you know if diver, if decision 1645 applies to spring diversions?
Um. Again, not being a lawyer, and I'm not fully certain of the context in which you're using the, the term spring diversions. I don't have an answer to that question, but I, I don't know of any subsequent decisions to 1645.
And we go down to page eight, please. Same document. Line 12. Have you reviewed permits or licenses issued by the state water board to determine whether the board has issued permits or licenses for diversions using boreholes that are as deep or deeper than those described here in paragraph 24?
If I, if I understand your question, you're asking if I reviewed licenses issued by the state board for similar or deeper boreholes?
Let's actually, let's read paragraph 24.
Typical horizontal borehole construction includes a conductor casing cemented from ground surface to a depth greater than 50 feet and perforated screen installed from the conductor casing seal to the total depth of the borehole. The dimension of, of, dimensions of the boreholes range between 2 and 1/2 and 2.875 inches in diameter, and each borehole is between 120 and 397 feet in length. The perforated screen and conductor materials consist of scheduled 40-gallonized pipe perforated with 0.125-inch holes drilled to allow the inflow of water.
Do you know if the state water board has issued permits or licenses for spring diversions using boreholes of a similar or deeper depth?
I do not.
Do you know if the Forest Service spring point of diversion uses a borehole?
It's, it, it appears to be a borehole, yes.
Does that diversion have a license issued by the state water board?
It does, but the, as I understand it, the license doesn't identify the borehole. There appears to have been other historical developments at that, at that surface water expression.
But there is a license issued for it.
There is a license, yes.
And we look at page nine, please. Paragraph 27. In line 6. Can you read that sentence, starting with where the original liner?
Where the original liner could not be removed, the boreholes were abandoned by cementing and were re-drilled at an adjacent location.
Thank you. Does cementing a borehole return a spring to its original pre-development condition?
Um. I, I think that's, that's more complex than a yes or no answer. It depends on how that borehole was constructed relative to the spring orifice and the relationship between the borehole and spring orifice.
So, would you say it may or may not return a spring to its pre-development condition, depending on some of the nuances and other factors that you described?
I mean, we would, we would have to first assume that this, this borehole was drilled at the spring orifice or, or adjacent. It, it may or may not, as, as you said, return it to its original condition.
Okay. Can we look at lines 7, please? Where, can you read that sentence, starting with the original boreholes?
The original boreholes were not intercepted by new boreholes, as testified by Ms. Stork and as concluded in the 2021 ROI.
Okay. Can we look at? 31, please. Page 80. Actually, do you, maybe we can scroll out a little bit. Do you recognize what this is?
If we could scroll back in just a little bit on the subject line. Transmittal of as-built drawings as related to the special, to the Forcer's special use permit?
Can we look at page 80, please? Do you recognize, do you know what this is?
I, I see the name Hydrodynamics Group at the top of the page, and it says, "Results of Arrowhead Spring FDA Compliance Studies."
Okay, let's scroll down a little bit. Down to the numbers. Did the Hydrodynamics Group conduct compliant, FDA compliance studies prior to Dames &amp; Moore?
Um. I, I'd have to look at the data at the top of the document. I know the Dames &amp; Moore document is 1999.
Okay. Um. Maybe we can scroll up to the date a little bit. So, what's, so what's the date here?
December 1997.
Okay. And then, let's scroll down a little bit. Okay. So, did the Hydrodynamics Group describe spring, spring tunnels 2, 3, and 7 as natural springs?
It appears that they did.
Okay. Did they describe springs 1 and 8 as natural springs?
It appears that they did.
Did they describe springs 1 and 8 as natural springs discharging through boreholes?
That's what I see by bullet number 2 there, yes.
Can we go to exhibit PT45, please? Can we see the whole page? Mr. Nichols, do you know what this is?
Um, I, I can, I can read the title page for sure.
Okay, are you familiar with?
I'm not, not intimately familiar with it, no.
Okay, can we look at page 5, please? Actually, page 4, I'm sorry. But, um. And can we zoom in on the paragraph under physiology? Okay, third line down. Can you read that sentence, starting with Arrowhead Complex 1?
Arrowhead Complex 1 and 8 is at an elevation of approximately 5,200 feet and is located in a tributary ravine of Strawberry Creek at the head of Coldwater Canyon.
Okay.
Lake One.
And we so by tributary ravine, that is a drainage to Strawberry Creek. Would that be correct?
Objection. You're again asking about a document that Mr. Nichols did not write and testify that he's not intimately familiar with.
I'm going to sustain the objection, so, Mr. Petrazzelli, please rephrase your question in terms of asking Mr. Nichols what his understanding is, if any, about this document. He does clearly have significant expertise in this area, and he may have an understanding that he can share with us.
Mr. Nichol, thank you. Mr. Nichols, based on your expertise, uh, would it, is it your understanding that where this paragraph describes Arrowhead Complex 1 and 8 being located in a tributary ravine of Strawberry Creek, does that mean that the springs would discharge flow into a drainage of Strawberry Creek?
Based on plain reading, it, it seems as though that's what the Hydrodynamics was saying.
Okay, thank you. Can we go down to page 5, please? And the first paragraph under springs. Thank you. Can you read this paragraph aloud, please?
Springs 1 and 8 were developed according to the standard of practice for developing springs from the 1930s to 1993. At the Arrowhead property, springs were developed during this period by either one, constructing a tunnel into the mountain horizontally at the spring orifice, or two, drilling a horizontal borehole into the orifice. The development of springs by these methods obliterated the natural spring orifice. Spring flows were captured totally by the spring development. Typically, if the original borehole clogged and new offset borehole was drilled at an angle to intercept the original borehole. Once a new borehole was drilled, the original spring borehole was capped at the surface. This resulted in diverting the spring flow to the new borehole.
So, based on your expertise, is it your understanding that, according to this report, the method of developing a spring by drilling a borehole into the spring orifice obliterated the natural spring orifice?
I understand that that's what Hydrodynamics is, is saying. I don't know what information that's based on.
Okay. Based on your expertise, is it your understanding that, according to this report, the intent of drilling an offset borehole was to intercept a previous borehole?
I just need to object again one more time to clarify for the record what's being asked and answered here. And to clarify that Mr. Nichols said he's not familiar with the report. You're asking questions about individual sentences, and I just don't want a misrepresentation in the record to be abused that Mr. Nichols is testifying about the foundation for this report when he's testified that he has none.
So, I'll ask this question a different way. Mr. Nichols, in your written testimony, you say that boreholes 1 and 8 were not drilled to intercept earlier boreholes. But does this report, as you understand it, based on your expertise, state that new offset boreholes were drilled to intercept previous boreholes?
They were, were not drilled to intercept the original borehole. I understand what Hydrodynamics is saying, and I believe they're incorrect on this point.
Okay. On, what is the basis that you state in your testimony that you believe they're incorrect on this point? Can you point us to that?
You're looking for the basis that I stated in my testimony, is that correct?
Yes.
Can we bring up that document?
That would be BTB 6. H9. Line 7 through 8. What is the basis that you cite in this sentence for stating that the original boreholes were not intercepted by new boreholes?
I didn't cite a basis.
Okay, so this sentence provides no basis for that statement.
There's not one-sided in the sentence.
Okay, thank you.
So let's, while we're here, I, I want to close the loop on this. Mr. Nichols, what is your basis for this statement that the original boreholes were not intercepted?
So the basis for this statement, which of course I didn't cite to, is the fact that after the fires in, in 2004, I personally disassembled and inspected each of the boreholes and probed them to their interior, to their, to their total depth. I worked with a contractor that, that operates the equipment that is used to drill horizontal boreholes. And we together disassembled, removed the liners, cleaned the boreholes, and probed them. Had they been intercepted, we wouldn't have been able to, our equipment would not have been able to make the turn necessary to probe those boreholes to their full depth. But, but that's the basis of my, of my statement here.
Thank you. You may proceed, Mr. Petrazelli.
Thank you. So now that the new boreholes 1 and 8 no longer intercept the original boreholes 1 and 8, does the water, does the water that the original boreholes 1 and 8 intercepted still discharge to the surface?
I don't have a framework to answer that question. I don't know what water or surface expressions, the original boreholes 1 and 8 were tied to, or their relationship to the, to the current boreholes.
So if the new boreholes did not intercept the old boreholes and they're no longer diverting water from the original Springs 1 and 8, you don't know what happened to the water previously discharging to the surface from the original Springs 1 and 8?
Objection. Compound and confusing.
Yeah, I, I'm going to sustain that objection. I think it misstates his testimony. I, I I think, Mr. Petrazelli, what you, well, you can decide how you want to ask your questions, but I think the question is, do the new boreholes intercept water that otherwise would have discharged at the locations of the original Springs 1 and 8?
Yes.
In, I'll, I'll take that as the question.
Go ahead, Mr. Nichols.
In, in state that I don't know.
Okay. If you look at page 15, please, line 6. And can you read the first sentence, please, in paragraph 50?
Two tunnels, perends, Tunnel 2 and Tunnel 3, close perends, were constructed in Strawberry Canyon in approximately 1930 for the purpose of collecting water in the subsurface from the fractured granitic apsephor.
Actually, we can, let's move on. I covered that question. Can we go to page 17, please? Can we go to page 19, paragraph 66? For the shut-in test you described in this paragraph, did you close all three boreholes at the same time?
Yes.
Okay. And as you, on, let's go to page 20. Line 11. Starting with the sentence, "After achieving equilibration..."
After achieving equilibration.
Can you read that, please?
Yes, sorry. "After achieving equilibration, the water table began to decline as previously unsaturated fractures absorbed the water necessary to drive the water table above the 34-foot maximum water level rise, stopping far short of the 127 to 157-foot water level rise required to affect surface water expression at the USFSPOD."
So was there equilibration if water was still filling unsaturated fractures?
Yes.
Okay. And we go to BTB 6. Page 24, please, line 12. Can you read this first sentence in paragraph 84?
I'm seeing paragraph 81.
Excuse me, paragraph 81.
81?
Yeah.
"The row papers pertaining to Strawberry Canyon include handwritten field notes, SOS-040, comma, 048, reports, perends, SOS-042, comma, 052, comma, 053, comma, 057, close perends, and related correspondence, perends, SOS-055, close perends."
Did you read those handwritten field notes when you prepared this testimony?
Portions of them.
Okay, but you didn't read all of them.
I didn't read all of them.
Okay. And if we can go to page 25, please. Paragraph 84. You reference your report BTB 7 in that paragraph. Is that a final report?
It is.
Has the US Forest Service accepted that report as final?
Um, I don't, we, we have ongoing discussions regarding the content. There will be addenda to that report, but that report remains as issued.
Have they asked for changes to that report?
The Forest Service has, has asked, again, we're in a comment cycle, and, and as we described to the Forest Service, there will be addenda to that report. But the document, as it, as it stands, is final.
So they've had comments on that report?
They've asked for additional analyses, yes.
Okay. So do they fully agree with the analysis in that report?
Objection. He can only speak to what he knows, and whether they agree or not is not something he can speak to.
Um, I'm going to sustain the objection. Just rephrase the question in terms of what he knows about what the Forest Service has centered on.
Based on the comments you've received from the Forest Service, do you know if the Forest Service agrees with your, the conclusions in the report?
It said the Forest Service hasn't given us a document that says they agree with the report.
Have they said if they disagree?
We developed and executed the studies in collaboration with the Forest Service. They haven't stated that they disagree.
But they haven't stated that they agree either.
Correct.
Okay. Have you issued the addenda to the report yet?
No.
Okay. So BTB 7 does not reflect anything that would be in that addenda.
Objection, is that a question?
Well, yeah, I, I mean, I think, Mr. Petrazelli, it's pretty obvious that the exhibit does not include the addenda that Mr. Nichols just testified and not been prepared yet, so I'm not sure what your point is.
So I, I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, um, when we look at BTB 7, what we read would not include anything that will be in the addenda that you will be providing in response to the Forest Service comments.
So again, Mr. Petrazzi, I think that's pretty obvious. I think what you might want to ask him is what topics has the Forest Service asked him to prepare addenda on? I would like to know that. I don't know whether they're going to be relevant to our hearing or not.
Okay. We'll get into that later. Um, can we go to page 26?
All right, well, while it's on my mind, so I don't forget. I'm going to ask you that, Mr. Nichols. Um, what topics has the Forest Service asked you to prepare addendums on?
So in, in particular, the, the report as, I should say, the report describes development of a model. The model is very large and very complex. In, in producing that report, we submitted, or we prepared, I should say, we made a base case of model runs. And the Forest Service has requested that we make additional model runs. And, and that's something that's in, in progress to, to simulate changes in conditions in the canyon in, in variable inputs to see the effects.
Thank you. You may proceed, Mr. Petrazelli. Excuse me, I was, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt again. I'm trying to write notes. I can't write as fast as you can talk. You said the Forest Service has asked for additional model runs regarding what?
In simplest terms, different scenarios, water use scenarios within the canyon.
Okay, thank you. You may proceed, Mr. Petrazelli.
And, Mr. Nichols, when you refer to the model, is that the coupled groundwater-surface-water model described in, I think it's chapter 7?
Yes.
Okay. Has that model been validated?
In, in terms of conventional model validation, it takes many years to validate a model, and it hasn't been through that process.
Okay, so it has not yet been validated?
That, that's a fair statement.
Okay. Has it been calibrated?
Within the terms of the data available, it has been calibrated.
But it's been calibrated, so it's been calibrated without validation. Is that correct?
Validation is a process that usually happens years after a model has been completed to check and see if conditions forecast, let's imagine if we forecast conditions five years from now. The validation comes five years from now when you check to see if those conditions happen. The calibration is a different process where you actually compare model outputs to, to the real-world data that you have for the, for the model domain and make a comparison to evaluate model performance.
Can you identify where in BTB 7 you calibrate the model?
The model, of course, is calibrated electronically. Are you asking for a description of the calibration process?
Yes.
If, if you'd like to bring the document up, we can look and see what the, what the text says regarding calibration.
I'm asking you to show me where the document explains the calibration.
Can we bring the document up?
Okay.
While we're doing this, can we ask for a time estimation? I think we're approaching, it's 4:30. I don't know, or should we have a hard stop time today, too?
I'm, I'm going to do that fairly soon. One thing, while, and it's a, it's a big file, so it, it's going to take a while for it to load onto Miss Mullins' computer and screen share, but while we're waiting for that, Mr. Nichols, when I was going through this, I noticed it looks like there's just a, I'll call it a compilation error. The second page of the PDF file that's BTB 7 is the third page of the Table of Contents, which is then repeated on the fourth page of the PDF file, and we don't have the first page of the Table of Contents, which should be the, the second page of the PDF file, so maybe sometime tonight or tomorrow morning you can work with your Blue Triton attorneys to see, I'm not sure what the simplest way to do this is. It's probably just to, it's up to you whether it's easier to just file a copy of that one Table of Contents page that's missing, or whether it's easier to file a revised version of the entire exhibit file, but I would like to have the correct page of the Table of Contents.
Okay, thank you. We'll look into that.
Thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Nichols, do you know where to go to? I mean, that's one of the problems, is when I look to the Table of Contents, I may not have the part that talks about calibration, but you know where, what you want us to scroll to here?
So I, I did open the document on my computer, too, and I'm, I'm looking at the, the text file. If you look at section 7.1.1.2, it talks about calibration. Yes.
Okay, 7.1.1.2. It's on text page 38, which I think it's a difference of 7, so I think that's PDF page 45, so let's go there and see if that's where we want to be.
And then there's more detail regarding calibration in 7.1.1.3.
Okay, so let's see if we can get there. Okay, so we're now, we have, I think it's PDF page 45 at the bottom, so tell us if you want, I mean, I don't, this is a couple of pages, so we don't need to read it all. But tell us where, maybe you can summarize this. I noticed section 7.1.1.3 does say model calibration, so can you just tell us basically where the text here in these two subsections refers to model calibration?
Um, all of section 7.1.1.3, but then there's some statements regarding the calibration in the, in the previous section, well.
All right, so thank you. So, Mr. Petrazelli, do you have questions on the, the calibration here?
This is the extent to which you describe the calibration of the model?
In this document, I believe.
Is there another document in evidence that describes that caliber, the calibration?
I would, I would also direct you to section 7.1.2.4, which describes the flow model calibration. Because there were two models that had to be calibrated independently and then linked together.
Okay.
And we have had subsequent discussions with the Forest Service, and we did issue them a, a, a document, I believe, that discussed the calibration further. And that would be a document that's not in evidence.
What period data did you use to calibrate the model?
So the model calibration happened essentially in two, in two components. There's a groundwater model, which of course is based on the only groundwater data available in the canyon. There's a groundwater model, which, of course, is based on the only groundwater data available in the canyon, which is flows from the boreholes and tunnels. In, in, I don't recall the exact period that was used for, for the calibration. I want to say that it, it, it corresponded with our study period. And then the surface water model, of course, the only data available for that were from the study period 2016. In, in, in the data in that, in the surface water model, probably stopped about the time that model construction began because we couldn't keep expanding it. So I'd say 2016 to 2020.
Okay. Did you use the same data to run the model as you used to calibrate the model?
Well, the, the, the calibration, again, we have very few data points within the canyon. All we have is the hand measurements, the creek flow for the surface water model, and the flows from the tunnels and boreholes. So by definition, essentially, the model is built as a steady-state model where we, we adjust the geology and the parameters to match the flows that we get. And so it's, it's considered a steady-state calibration.
Okay.
So are you done, Mr. Petrazelli, with asking about model calibration?
Yes.
So what, what other topics do you wish to cover on your cross-examination, Mr. Nichols?
So I wanted to ask about the Spring 4 testing, and then I wanted to ask about the 10-12 shut-in tests.
Okay, are those the only topics?
I wanted to ask about, excuse me, I wanted to ask about the assessment of some of the row documents.
Okay, are those the three topics you have left?
Yes.
Okay, do you have any time estimates for those?
Um, half hour to an hour, depending on how Mr. Nichols responds.
Okay. And incidentally, I, I do want to just say, Mr. Nichols, you're, you're holding up well. I know cross-examination, even for somebody like you who has a lot of experience with it, it's never easy, but I appreciate the fact, I think you're really trying hard to give good and complete answers to Mr. Petrazelli's questions. And, Mr. Petrazelli, I want to say thank you to you. I think you're really doing a good job of asking clear questions. So this process is, it's hard and it's detailed, but I, I just want to compliment both of you on your professionalism here. Um, I, I have a little bit of a quandary here. I, 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 I do have the observation, I think cross-examination is sort of like gas being discharged into a vacuum. It sort of fills whatever space is available. You know, and I used to be an attorney asking cross X, too, so I know. So I don't know whether to stop now or keep going. How long do you think it'll take for the Spring 4 testing questions, Mr. Petrazelli?
I think that'll be short.
Okay, let's do this. Let's do your Spring 4 testing questions today. And then tomorrow afternoon, when we come back, we'll start with your questions on the Spring 10 through 12 shut-in test and your discussion, your questions about the row documents. So why don't you proceed with the Spring 4 testing at this point?
All right, can we look at BTB 6, page 30, please? And paragraph 101.
Okay, that's the bottom of the page. Go on to the next page. Why don't you make it, Miss Mullins, please make it one notch bigger. There we go, thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Nichols, in testing Spring 4, did you evaluate flows from Spring 1?
A Spring 1 as a, as a surface expression?
Yes.
Um, I, I don't know of any location called Spring 1.
So you don't know that you've ever evaluated any discharge from Spring 1?
Wait, wait, that's, that's not fair, Mr. Petrazelli. That, that misstates his testimony. He said there's no existing surface expression of Spring 1. So I, I, I think you need to, if you want to follow up, I think you need to ask your question a different way, otherwise you're misstating what he just said.
Um, did you evaluate the flows from Spring 8?
I don't know of any surface expression by the name of Spring 8.
Okay. And those were the extent of my questions about Spring 4.
Oh, well, that was quick.
Yeah.
How long are your questions on the Spring 10 through 12 shut-in test going to take?
I think that'll be longer.
Okay, I, you know, we've, we've had a full day today, so let's go ahead and, and wrap it up. I know I, I gave some homework assignments to all of you as well. So we'll plan to come back. Our plan is, is 1 o'clock tomorrow. I have a schedule conflict in the morning, and also I've, I've given you a few homework assignments. And just as a reminder for everybody that's reviewing the list of the AHO, the four AHO staff exhibits, each of which is a folder with several files in it. And then for those who want to object on the grounds of lack of foundation to parts of BTB 6 and BTB 7, it's preparing written lists of those objections so that we can process them more efficiently. And then for the Blue Triton team, it's, please give us a, a copy of the first page of the Table of Contents of BTB 7. If you can at least get that email to, just that one-page email to the AHO email address, of course, with CCs to the service list, then I, I can print it one page and put it in my paper copy, and then I'll leave it to Mr. Sanders and Mr., Miss Grady to decide whether you want to just do it. You can either have a supplemental file, like BTB 7A with that one page, or you can send the whole file. Again, I know it's a big file, so it may be easier just to give us supplemental one page, but that's up to you.
Thank you.
I think those are my only homework assignments. Have I missed anything beyond that? Um, okay, so for, go ahead, Mr. Petrazelli, please.
Mr. Lilly, you asked me to upload revised exhibits. I did that, I believe, during the lunch hour, so.
Okay, thank you for letting us know. And that was, I know it was PT 313 and PT 314. There was one word correction, PT 313, and then adding the label, exhibit label, to PT 314. Are those the only uploads you did?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And, Miss Stoller, your hand is up. Go ahead. I was just going to ask you a question, but you can ask your question first.
Regarding our subpoena, when did you want further information from us on that?
Um, thank you. I, I would like to discuss that after we have finished all the questioning of Mr. Nichols, so the cross X and redirect, if any, and of course, my questions. Um, I, the reason I want to do that is that will give me a, a much better handle on the scope of his testimony and topics he's considered, which I think will help me understand the context of what you may still be seeking. So be prepared for tomorrow. It could be we don't get to this until Wednesday, but it'll be as soon as we finish that. The, the examination, Mr. Nichols, I'll ask Mr. Nichols to stick around in case we have follow-up questions of him as a result of my discussion with you. So does that make sense?
Yes.
All right, and then I, I did want to ask you, just from a, a time check point of view, do you have any estimate for, and again, I'm not going to hold you to it, but trying to do some planning. Do you have any estimate of your time for cross-examination?
Um, so I'm carefully tracking what Mr. Petrazelli is doing. So to some extent, it depends on what he does in the remainder of his time. But as of now, I'm guessing 45 minutes to an hour. But I think that that will be reduced somewhat by what Mr. Petrazelli does.
Yeah, well, now that you've heard it, you have a chance this evening, tomorrow morning, to go over what he has asked and covered, and that may help you refine your questions if you can. And let me just get my list here. Let's be a little bit of a mess here. Um, I'm trying to remember who else. I know we have this, Mr. Lowe, you are still here. How long do you think your cross X is going to take?
I, I would say an hour.
Okay. And, Miss Frye, are you still here?
I'm still here.
How long do you think your cross X is going to take?
I'm not sure. 30 minutes. This depends what questions are asked.
Okay.
Before.
And then, Miss Belenky, how long do you think your cross X is going to take?
I would say less than an hour, probably half an hour.
Okay, we'll put down 30. I know how these numbers go, but those are all good estimates. Mr. Silver, are you going to be asking any cross X questions?
Uh, no, I don't intend to at present time.
Okay. And have I forgotten? I don't know, Miss, Miss Nickel, are you going to ask any cross X questions? Or Mr. Vivint? I see Mr., Miss Nickel. I don't see Mr. Vivint. I don't know if you can go off mute or if you're still there. Okay, well, we'll, we'll bring that up tomorrow if necessary. So is anybody, is there anybody missed who's going to want a cross X tomorrow? All right, I, I don't know whether or not we'll finish tomorrow. I'd like to, but we may or may not. We'll see how it goes, and if necessary, we'll roll over into Wednesday. We should be able to finish Wednesday morning if we don't finish Tuesday afternoon. Um, just as a reminder, particularly for Mr. Lowe and Miss Frye, since you are not attorneys and haven't done this a lot, really try hard, and you can be planning ahead of time to develop short, succinct questions without a lot of introductory statements. I know it's an art, and attorneys spend years trying to perfect their craft. Some do better than others. But please try to formulate short, simple questions rather than long statements, maybe followed with a short question. So you have, you have some time to work on that, so it'll make it go a lot faster, you'll get a lot less objections, and it'll be more efficient, and we'll, we'll get the information. And, you know, and I, and I will say, I think Mr. Nichols is doing a pretty darn good job of answering questions here. So I think if you ask reasonable questions, he will give you answers to the best of his knowledge. So. All right, thank you all. Is there anything else we need to cover this afternoon? All right, so we are scheduled to be back tomorrow morning at 1:00 PM. Um, good luck with all your homework. I'll be reviewing my notes as well, and I will see you all then. Have a good day. Bye.